Welcome, everybody. Glad to see you all here. We're going to go ahead and get started. It's 5 o'clock. This is Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. It is September 16th, 2024. If everybody could please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which is in our hands, indivisible, the liberty and justice of
At this time in the agenda, we take a moment of silence for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All right. Thank you very much. We have a time-sensitive agenda item. It is a 5:01 PM time-certain public hearing, and we're going to go ahead and proceed with that public hearing. This is to adopt final millage and final budget. The Flagler County Board of County Commissioners convenes the second and final public hearing on the Flagler County Fiscal Year 2024-25 Final Millage Rate and Final Budget as required by Florida statutes, Chapter 129 and 200. If anyone in our audience is here for the purpose of contesting their property value assessment, a petition for adjustment with the Value Adjustment Board should have been filed by 5 o'clock PM Monday, September 9th, 2024, as stated on the TRIM notices that were sent by the county's property appraiser via first-class mail to every taxpayer on the property value assessment roll. For those in attendance wishing to address the board on this evening's proposed actions, citizen comments will be taken following an explanation of the final millages and budget by the Financial Services Office of Management and Budget Team and as part of each motion presented to the board for consideration. The Financial Services Director, John Brower, will now present the Fiscal Year 25 Final Millage Rates and Budget Overview.
...actions related to the adoption of the final millage rates and final budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025. Tonight's hearing is the second of two public hearings required to be held per Florida statutes for taxing authority to properly adopt millage rates and a budget for the upcoming fiscal year. To begin, the Florida Department of Revenue has determined that Flagler County should combine the millage rate for the general county-wide levy, proposed to be 7.8695 mils for FY '25, and the portion of the voter-approved millage used for the environmentally sensitive land's operating expenses, proposed to be 0.1250 mils, for the purpose of calculating the county's total operating millage and the applicable rollback rate. Rollback rate is generally defined as the millage rate which, exclusive of new construction, additions to structures, and a few other specific categories, will provide the same ad valorem tax revenue for each taxing authority as was levied during the prior year. For the fiscal year 2025 final budget, the aggregate proposed operating millage for which the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners' countywide levy is 7.9945 mils, which is 6.28% greater than the rollback rate of 7.5218 mils. When the current year-proposed aggregate millage rate exceeds the calculated aggregate rollback rate for the TRIM process in conjunction with Florida statute 200.065, requires that a notice of tax increase be advertised. To that end, the required notice, budget, and meeting information was properly advertised within the Palm Coast Observer on Thursday, September 12th, 2024. This increase is necessary to fund our operations, obligations, and mission of the county and our constitutional officers during the 2025 fiscal year. Mr. Chair, the total of the county's final budget for fiscal year 2024-25 is presented within this agenda's backup as Schedule A. The total of $307,753,121 is identical to the tentative budget ultimately adopted by the board during the first public hearing held on September 4th, 2024, within these chambers. In the interest of transparency, the Schedule A lists the adopted tentative budget and shows under the Adjustments to Tentative column that no changes have occurred. The final FY '25 budget is shown immediately after. We're happy to answer any questions pertaining to the millage rates and budgets before you at this time.
All right. At this time, are there any general questions from the board? I don't see any questions. I would now like to invite citizens to comment on the overall fiscal year 2024-25 Final Millage Rates and Final Budget Overview as presented. Please keep in mind that there will be an opportunity for citizens to comment on the fiscal year 2025 Final Millage Rates and Final Budget individually later in this proceeding, as each requested action will be a motion before the board to be considered for adoption. Does anybody wish to address the board? Now is the time on this item. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the First Public Comments section of this public hearing.
Mr. Chair, Florida statutes require the board to adopt the final millage rates prior to adopting the related final budget. As such, before you is Resolution Number 2024-81, Resolution to Adopt the Final Millage Rates for the Fiscal Year Ending in September 30th, 2025 pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 200 Florida statutes, providing for conflicts and severability and providing for an effective date. This resolution includes a general fund millage of 7.8695 mils, the voter-approved millage rate for the environmentally sensitive lands' operating budget at 0.1250 mils, the voter-approved environmentally sensitive lands' debt service millage at 0.1250 mils, and the general obligation bonds millage for the judicial center at 0.1148 mils. The total millage rate for FY '25 is 8.2343 mils, which is .1 mils lower than FY '24's millage rate of 8.3343.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution Number 2024-81, adopting the final millage rates for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Sullivan. At this time, I'll take public comment on the motion if anybody wishes to address the commission on this item. All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Any other final comments from the board? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, subsequent to the board's adopting the FY '25 Final Millage Rates is to adopt the corresponding FY '25 Final Budget. Before you is Resolution Number 2024-82, a resolution to adopt the final budget for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025 pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 200 Florida statutes, providing for conflicts and severability and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution Number 2024-82, adopting the final budget for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner O'Brien. This time, I'll open it up for public comment if there's anybody from the public that wishes to address the commission on this item. Now is the time to come forward. All right. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Any final comments? All right. Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, staff request permission for the board authorizing the county administrator to execute the ministerial documents required to complete the millage rate and budget adoption process required by Florida statute.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the county administrator ministerial authorization to execute the documents required to complete the millage rate and budget adoption process.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner O'Brien. This time, I'll open up for public comment if there's anybody from the public that wishes to address the commission on this item. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public comment. Any final discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners has completed the annual budget adoption process for fiscal year 2025. All requirements as mandated by Florida law have been met. Thank you, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you, Mr. Brower. Thank you to your team. This concludes the second and final TRIM-related public hearing to adopt the fiscal year 25 county budget. All right. And we will come back to the meeting. Item 2 under the agenda is additions, deletions, and modifications. As a point of reference, we've added Item 7-CC, which is Consideration of Award to Request for Proposal to Well Point for Medical and Prescription Stop-Loss Insurance in the estimated amount of $824,091.60 for the fiscal year 2425. That was added to the agenda and posted to the website on 9/11/2024. Additionally, we have removed Consent Item 7S. That'll be... That was just pulled. Want to make a few announcements. Registration for the Fall 2024 Citizens Academy is now open. There'll be 13 sessions to be held on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:00 AM to noon, beginning October 8th. This is a great opportunity for residents to learn about the responsibilities and operations of our county departments, and because the classes are held at a variety of county facilities, participants get to experience firsthand the broad range of resources and capabilities that Flagler County provides. Class sizes limited, so please, if you are interested, please sign up today. Additionally, you can visit www flaglercounty.gov to view our transparency dashboards, and there we've got different portals on our citizens advisory boards where you can log complaints on our aircraft noise abatement portal, you can review capital projects, and also review our drainage maintenance portal. Upcoming commission meetings, we have our next regular meeting, which is Monday, October 7th, at 9:00 AM. We have a couple proclamations today. Our first is going to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month as October 2024. This was requested by John Subers, the Director of Advent Health Foundation Palm Coast, and reading this one is Commissioner Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If you're here for this proclamation, come on up. Welcome.
Welcome, welcome.
All right. Proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners, recognizing October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Flagler County, whereas breast cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in women. In 2024, an estimated 310,720 cases of invasive breast cancer are expected in women in the United States, and about 2,800 new cases of invasive breast cancers are expected to be diagnosed in men. And whereas only 1 in 8 women diagnosed with breast cancer have a family history, and 85% have no family history, with an increase in incidence rates since 1990, beginning predominantly in women age 50 or older. And whereas only early detection with timely screening mammograms has helped to boost the number of breast cancer survivors to more than 3.8 million in the United States, also resulting in a 40% decline in mortalities since 1989. And whereas Advent Health Palm Coast Foundation's Pink Army, with the support of our community, has raised and distributed over $180,000, helped hundreds of patients, and funded over 1,000 procedures in direct support of Flagler County women and men dealing with breast cancer. And whereas Advent Health's team members and physicians, who are dedicated and compassionate, continue to tirelessly care for cancer patients in Flagler County, team members will provide the best cancer care closer to home with the addition of the Freitag Cancer Center, currently under construction at the Advent Health Palm Coast Campus, with plans to open in early 2005. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that they hereby proclaim October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In Flagler County, further, they encourage all citizens to join our breast cancer awareness campaign by encouraging all women to receive breast cancer screenings, actively educate others concerning the importance of early screening, and raise the pink flag against breast cancer. Adopted the 16th day of September, 2024, signed by Tom Bexley, Clerk of Circuit Court, and signed by our chairman, Andrew Dance. So come forward, and thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Go ahead, John. My name is Tony Papandrea. I'm the chairman of Advent Health Foundation, and we thank you for our friendship, for our partnership over the years, and we thank you for this proclamation. You know, I've stood up here for a lot of years and talked about a lot of this stuff, but tonight, we have some help. We have some people who would like to speak, and I'd like to introduce Denise Bales-Chubb, CEO of Flagler St. John's Market for Advent Health.
So as we gather today to recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I want to emphasize how vital this cause is to our community here in Flagler County. Breast cancer affects so many of our families, friends, and neighbors, and we stand united in spreading awareness and providing support. The month of October serves as a reminder of the courage of those fighting, the strength of our survivors, and the importance of continuing our efforts to support them. At Advent Health, we are committed to providing access to advanced mammography and breast health services, because the earlier we detect, the better the outcome. We continue to provide the best cancer care closer to home with the addition of our Freitag Cancer Center, which will open in 2025. We are incredibly grateful for the ongoing support of Flagler County in backing our initiatives such as our Pink on Parade 5K held October 6th, which not only brings our community together, but also raises funds for critical cancer care services here in this county. Thank you for making breast cancer awareness a priority for our county.
Thank you, Denise. I like I said, I've stood up here many times and said many things, and the support that we have from our administrators, Denise Galwally DeQuino, he's the CEO of our new Parkway Hospital, Kristen, our chief nurse officer, Carolyn, who's going to run the dog show when we do our 5K. But I would like to introduce our Double D ladies, Danielle and Denise, who will tell you why they're here, why they support breast cancer awareness, and what they do.
Welcome.
Thank you. Double D's. Hello, everyone. We are Denise Fernandez and Daniela DeSosa with Homes for Heroes Flagler. We are thrilled to be here today. We love serving our heroes of Flagler County by helping them achieve their dream of homeownership.
One of the things that makes Flagler County so special is our strong sense of community, and that's why we're super passionate and supportive of the Advent Health Pink Army 5K and Pet Walk contest happening on October 6th, 2024. Cancer has touched all of us in some way, whether it's been ourselves, a friend, loved one. For me, it was my grandmother and had a very profound impact on my life.
At the Pink Army 5K and Pet Walk, all the proceeds stay here in Flagler County to help for those who need. That's awesome. When you work with me and Daniela at Homes for Heroes Flagler to purchase a home, heroes including law enforcement, military, healthcare workers, teachers, firefighters, you receive a discount on closing. After closing, you even get a check back. Sometimes it's $4,000, $5,000.
So Denise, what was the other exciting announcement that you wanted to share?
We are extending our discounts to help all cancer survivors and those who are currently facing treatments, because to us, all are heroes. For more information, visit homesforheroesflagler.com.
So we just ask everybody to help us pack out the event. Homes for Heroes Flagler will be providing prizes for the winners of the Pink Out Your Pet Contest. So make sure to stop by our tent and make sure that you're registered and the pet is registered, and it's pinkonparade.com Palm Coast to sign up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, all. Thank you, Donald, David, Andy, Leanne, and Greg. You're our friends, you're our partners. Y'all come out and watch us on October 6th, and we thank you. Picture time.
All right. Picture time. And the banner.
And Mr. Chairman, while we're sitting down, a motion to approve the Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sullivan, seconded by Commissioner Pennington. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, all. All right. Next up is Proclamation for Suicide Awareness Month, September 2024. This is requested by Pam Bertolo, Executive Director of Flagler Open Arms Recovery Services. Good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome.
Thank you. Excited to be here.
Hold that down a little bit so we can talk. There you go.
We're excited to be here.
Yay.
I'll go ahead and read it. It's a proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners, recognizing the month of September, 2024, as Suicide Awareness Month in Flagler County, whereas suicide is a complex public health issue that affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and communities, and whereas over 50,000 people committed suicide last year, and whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas the month of September is designated as National Suicide Prevention Month to raise awareness, reduce stigma, and promote mental health and well-being, and whereas the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, now reached by dialing 988, provides 24/7 free and confidential support for individuals in distress, prevention and crisis resources for those who care about someone, and best practices for professionals, and whereas the Rotary Club of Flagler Beach, the Rotary Club of Flagler County, and Flagler Open Arms Recovery Services are committed to supporting mental health initiatives and providing resources to individuals and families affected by suicide, and whereas it is essential to create a culture of hope, resilience, and support for all members of our community. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that we hereby declare September, 2024, a Suicide Prevention Month in Flagler County, and we encourage all citizens to learn about suicide prevention, to reach out to those in need, to support the efforts of the Rotary Club of Flagler Beach, the Rotary Club of Flagler County, and Open Arms Recovery Services in promoting mental health and well-being. We urge all residents to become familiar with the 988 lifeline and to share this vital resource with others. By working together, we can create a community where everyone feels connected, supported, and hopeful. Adopted the 16th day of September, 2024, attested by Tom Bexley and Andy Dance.
Thank you so much. Before we go any further, I'd like my friends to introduce themselves. You need to be introduced.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Roy Seager, Airport Director, also part of the Rotary Club of Flagler Beach. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Matthew Helston, and I'm a certified peer specialist for Flagler Open Arms Recovery Services. Thank you, guys.
And what else?
And I'm also a member of the Rotary Club.
I'm Pam Bertolo, and I'm representing both the Rotary Club of Flagler Beach and Flagler Open Arms Recovery Services. Tonight for us is a do-over, so we brought some more material for you all, but we're not going to talk very long at all, because we already did that last time. We had a little... Karen Callahan, Communications and Engagement Manager.
Welcome.
Okay, I am, okay, I am the Communications and Engagement Manager. The Communications Department's primary mission is to serve as a comprehensive information hub for Flagler County, delivering news and updates through written and visual content, social media, events, videos, and other user-friendly formats. I oversee a very talented team, and they're also very creative. We have Marina Carver, our Multimedia Engagement Coordinator. Her focus is graphic design, events, and social media. Then we have Julie Murphy, our Communications Coordinator. She's the editor and primary writer for our newsletters, and she distributes our press releases and handles media inquiries. Then we have Carlos Hernandez, the AV Production Coordinator. He's a member of our team, but he's actually a part of the IT Department. He is Flagler County's Webmaster, Broadcast Server, and Sound System Specialist and Videographer. That's who we are, and this is what we do. We ensure the accuracy and reliability of communications released to the public. We create informational documents, graphics, photographs, videos, as well as website pages and elements for public dissemination. We produce Flagler County's annual report. We support public outreach campaigns and events. We do content creation for social media, newsletters, and official publications. We foster media relationships and track and analyze media coverage. We ensure timely and accurate updates to the public during emergencies and crises, and we facilitate effective internal communications within Flagler County Government. That's what we do, and this is why, or this is how we do it. Here are some platforms that you can find us on. Our official website provides comprehensive information about Flagler County's services, news, and resources. It's your go-to hub for official updates and information. You can also find us on Facebook. It's for real-time updates, community news, and interactive content. You can also find us on Instagram for visually engaging graphics and content. On X, on X, we have timely announcements, quick updates, and relevant news. What separates us from other counties is the Nextdoor app. Not very many counties in Florida have it, and it's quite critical because it allows for community updates at a granular level. So it's a great platform for neighborhood-specific news and interactions. You can also follow us on our LinkedIn page for professional updates and insights on county initiatives and employee spotlights. We also have a YouTube channel for content including event highlights, informational videos, and official announcements. Many of you know, we also have, you can tune into Channel 492 on Spectrum for local government programming updates and community features on TV. And finally, you can listen to our podcast, which is in-depth discussions on county projects, interviews with key figures, and more. And that's available wherever you listen to podcasts. We also have a few newsletters. We have Coast to Country. It's the winner of this year's NACIO Awards of Excellence, Best of Category. It's our quarterly digital magazine. You can find it on our website. And we have a monthly employee newsletter called Flagler Bulletin. And it's at this point that I'd like to point out, press releases, we do issue a plethora of information throughout the year, with more than 150 press releases issued in the last 12 months, and along with that, over twice as much media coverage, notable media coverage. Okay, here's where I would like to show you a quick snapshot of traffic on our website and social media channels. We're very proud of this. So most notable, we average 26,000 unique website users a month, almost 54,000 neighbors following us on Nextdoor, 11,000 followers on Facebook, and on LinkedIn, we've grown our following by 25% in the last five months. We monitor and track metrics to determine message success, and there's been growth and increased engagement this past fiscal year on all channels. Still on how we do it, each platform is very unique, so we'd like to set them apart because not all social media channels are created equal. So on Facebook, it's, it's our most popular content that we've received on Facebook has been due to our outreach efforts on DoInEducation and information on our Army Corps of Engineer Beach Nurishment Project. On Nextdoor, like I said before, it allows us to get granular with our messaging. The messages that resonate, that resonates most with residents are those regarding issues that directly affect their day-to-day activities, such as road closures. This is especially important during times of crisis. And over the last few months, we've been posting more on LinkedIn as well. LinkedIn enables direct interaction with professional audience, including businesses and community organizations. The most popular posts on here have been employee spotlights and department and program highlights and achievements. And now this is the most important part of our jobs here, is why we do it. It's the why. So we do it, I'm just going to read directly off the slide. Ensure residents stay informed and connected to county services and events, promote transparency in local government, support local safety through timely emergency updates, and we foster community pride by highlighting local stories and achievements. So with that being said, we'd encourage everyone to follow and engage on all of our social media channels, and that's a QR code with our Communication Department email, so if you've missed anything or want a copy of the presentation, you can go ahead and click the QR code. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And everybody's, I see Marina's in the back.
Marina's here taking photos. Julie's, Julie's not feeling well, so she's not here, and Carlos is.
Carlos is our rock star in the booth.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our recognitions and presentations. At this time, we will go to Community Outreach. This is a 30-minute time period that's been allocated for public comment on any consent agenda item or topic that is not on the agenda. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to address the commission. Speakers should approach the podium, identify themselves, and direct their comments to the chair. So at this time, we'll open up Community Outreach.
Good evening. Wendy Tramarchi, new resident in Flagler County, currently a longtime current board member, Indian River County Humane Society. I'm speaking today about the Humane Society. I know we've done this a few times. I should be the only speaker today, so cut our time. This, we weren't going to come back and let you guys just do your thing, but something else came up, and I thought you should know. So a dog that was, been shot, bleeding, and in need of immediate vet care was posted on Facebook. The County Animal Control Officer, Katie Share, Shay, Share, was called, as this was after hours protocol for this situation, as the animal would go to an emergency vet or back to the shelter for the vet of record to see immediately. The animal control officer did neither. She put the bleeding, shot dog in a crate and left it. We do not have any timeframe, but it was at least overnight and possibly the next day before anyone saw this animal. The shelter has no daily vet in-house. They have a vet that comes once a week on Thursdays. That's their vet of record. So who cared for this dog overnight? I passed out. You have pictures of this dog. This dog should have had immediate vet care. This sparked an investigation by the Flagler Sheriff's Department, case number 2024-50055. They found cause for felony animal cruelty charges against the animal control officer and were sent, it was sent to the state's attorney's office. After approximately now two months, her case is still pending. Why? This charge did not come lightly by the Sheriff's Department or without cause. There is a precedent set for this particular charge in our county before. Last year, a guilt, a gentleman guilty of felony animal cruelty for leaving a dog shot in his own crate for two hours without vet care, received jail time, 42 months probation, and could not have an animal in his home again. And we're waiting months over a county person to, for this to be looked at. Why? So there's rumors, of course, spreading about why nobody's coming forward for this. A past Shelter Board of Directors fired this animal control officer, and the current Executive Director was suspended for several weeks and demoted. After a new board took over, the Executive Director was put back into her former position, and she rehired the same animal control agent that was fired. Over, our taxpayer dollars should not be spent on inhumane animal care, and as this commission and the City Council heard at the workshop, the Flagler Humane Society Board and its Executive Director have no plans and very little money to handle the extreme overpopulation and infrastructure they have now. I realize you have many issues on your plate now, but this needs the attention. This is about living, breathing animals that feel pain just as we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have something else I'll hand about somebody else that you should know about that just got fired.
Thank you. Did you send the pictures to, to the clerk?
I gave you some, yeah.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello.
Hi. Speak into the mic, please.
Oh, sorry. My name is Sherri Liffka. I'm at 44 First Avenue, and we are District 2. I'm just going to read my statement. I'm here today with my husband to bring our concerns to the entire Board of Commissioners regarding our deeded right-of-way that gives us the right to go on our county property and is located at the front of our property line. We are a corner lot to three roads, and the front windows of our home look down Solly Road. The 30-day letter, which you have been provided, I hope you've been provided, reflects the obstacles that have been placed in this right-of-way by our neighbor. The later states, the letter states that these obstacles are to be removed. The 30-day letter is signed by Adam Mingle and dated January 26th this year. For over four years shortly after purchasing our property, we repeatedly asked the county to uphold their laws and remove the obstacles located in this right-of-way so that we may maintain the right-of-way in our own front yard, just like every other Flagler County homeowner. As per Mr. Mingle's 30-day letter, these obstacles were to be removed by our neighbor at the end of February, or the county was to remove them. The 30-day letter actually stated, "The presence of the fence and the landscaping within the Solly right-of-way is a precedent and an exception that we are seeking now to remedy. We cannot, as a matter of public policy, allow the fence and landscaping within Solly right-of-way to remain," unquote. For over four years now, we have been forced to spend a lot of time, energy, and money in defending the law. The law, the county should enforce on our behalf for our property rights. In what is intended to be our golden years of retirement, we have spent thousands of dollars, including a $2,000 detailed survey, as requested by Flagler County, to try to get the county to do their job. We have made our neighbor, the Code Enforcement Office, the County Commissioner, and the County Attorneys aware of our concerns many times over the past four years, and asked that Flagler County uphold the rule of law and restore our property rights. During these four years, our perception is that our own county commissioner continues to intervene to stop any progress made on this issue due to his personal friendship with our neighbor. It is our perception that our own county commissioner does not represent all his constituents equally or fairly as he claims. His favoritism and friendship with our neighbor is obvious, and it's not only to us. Our perception is that the continuous lack of respect and inaction comes directly from our own county commissioner's interference due to his friendship and allegiance with our neighbor. We are here because we have been ignored by Flagler County for over four years, to the point of being discriminated against. We believe that there are certain Flagler County officials that are not working under the sunshine rule, and we are not, and they are not treating our residents equally, and this comes from our own experiences over four years. Please, it's easy at this point. Just enforce your 30-day letter. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I just want to add to, I just want to add to that.
Feed your name, please.
My name's David Liffka, 44 First Avenue, and she did a very good job of saying what we've experienced for now four and a half years. It's cost us hundreds of personal hours. We're probably approaching $15,000 in expenses for something that should have been taken care of the first time we went to Code Enforcement. They were, they were aware of it. They refused to do nothing about it. They gave us a runaround. We, we contacted them since then, since the 30-day notice, both by email and phone message, and say, why is this not being enforced? Completely ignored. That's been the story the whole time. We've worked with the city or county attorneys, and everything is, everything is just a stall, and the stall has turned into four and a half years. Our neighbor does not like looking at our house. He doesn't like looking across the street. He at one time had a fence, a privacy fence put across our front yard. At least the county got that taken care of. But he's building blinds. They refer to it, him and his HOA, as a beautification project. No, what they're putting in now is just hedges and more trees instead of a fence, so the same thing will, will occur. It's been frustrating. Let me see, what else? She, she's covered most of it, and I'm just, I'm just filling in some of the blanks. If you'd like to talk to us later, we've got a lot more stuff we can tell you detailed and with a timeline. I'm asking y'all to help us. I'm asking, we're hoping this is now being put into sunshine because it doesn't seem like it has been for the past four and a half years, and we're hoping y'all can help us with this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Kim Carney, Flagler Beach. I received a letter or notification of a special meeting to be held in Flagler Beach tomorrow morning, tomorrow evening, September 17th. And I just had a couple questions because the last meeting you all had, this annexation came up, and I didn't know if it was going to be discussed tonight or not. I didn't see it on the agenda. So I basically have four questions. Has the county received the required reports that the city's required to give before annexation? Is the city timely in taking this action? So the action that is on the special meeting is four ordinances, and I'm sure it's, you know, protocol for annexation, dealing with section, the statute, Section 171.044. Also, the zoning map designation obviously has to be dealt with, the comprehensive plan and property rights in the comprehensive plan. I did request a copy of the presentation that was given to the Flagler Beach Par Board, and I was wondering if there will be a report from either the county-- They refer to it, him and his HOA, as a beautification project. No, what they're putting in now is just hedges and more trees instead of a fence, so the same thing will occur. It's been frustrating. Let me see, what else? She, she's covered most of it, and I'm just, I'm just filling in some of the blanks. If you'd like to talk to us later, we've got a lot more stuff we can tell you detailed and with a timeline. I'm asking y'all to help us. I'm asking, we're hoping this is now being put into sunshine because it doesn't seem like it has been for the past four and a half years, and we're hoping y'all can help us with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Kim Carney, Flagler Beach. I received a letter or notification of a special meeting to be held in Flagler Beach tomorrow morning, tomorrow evening, September 17th. And I just had a couple of questions because the last meeting you all had, this annexation came up, and I didn't know if it was going to be discussed tonight or not. I didn't see it on the agenda. So I basically have four questions. Has the county received the required reports that the city's required to give before annexation? Is the city timely in taking this action? So the action that is on the special meeting is four ordinances, and I'm sure it's, you know, protocol for annexation, dealing with section, the statute, Section 171.044. Also, the zoning map designation obviously has to be dealt with, the comprehensive plan and property rights in the comprehensive plan. I did request a copy of the presentation that was given to the Flagler Beach Par Board, and I was wondering if there will be a report from either the county administrator or the county attorney this evening as part of their report. It's the outcome of the presentation that was discussed at the 93 B O C C. And number four, could the county attorney please define the word urbanization as it relates to Florida statute, Section 171.044? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Got to be quick, I almost moved on you.
Hi there. Tiffany Wigan, lifelong resident here of Flagler Beach and Flagler County. I'm bringing to awareness the temporary use of agreement here at River to Sea Preserve with RAGA Surf and/or Inter United Soccer Academy. I understand that the temporary permit was issued for them in and of itself. I read through the permit to see that they do have use of the boardwalk and other areas in and of itself. But I'm curious to know how we're going to move forward with the temporary permit considering the entity that is overtaking the business is not a nonprofit. So if the entity overtaking the business is a nonprofit, I understand we have certain state laws that might allow that to, to continue to progress. But if the business in and of itself that is taking up the residence of a state, county, or city park, how does that play into everything else with the state laws and with our jurisdiction when we write these rules? I'm sure all of you know our current situation with captains and our, I guess the best way to say it is our agreement with them. I would really hate to see anything happen with another county park that is not overseen properly with either a nonprofit or a for-profit business moving in. We talk a lot about parking when we talk about anything related to the beach, and yet there's no parking study that's being done before we open up this contract to be allowed private businesses on a county public park. Those have certain rules and jurisdictions that need to be seen, overseen, and done. I'm not sure if all of those rules and jurisdictions are being overseen. I know the emergency order is different from the order in and of itself, but I'm standing here today to strongly urge the county commission to consider the order and how we progress forward past this emergency order. The emergency order is there. It stands as it stands, I understand that. But moving forward, we put ourselves in a situation that could end up not playing out well to the county if we're not overseeing this and just making sure that we're, we're benefiting just as much as a private benefit, private business is benefiting from our use of public land. With that said, I just urge you guys to ensure that the agreement is mutual, that it's beneficial for both parties and not just one. The use of a nonprofit is there and exists, but just make sure the business that is there is actually the nonprofit or profitable business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Just a couple of brief comments on, following up on the public comment. I know, Tiffany, you were at the meeting, so we talked pretty, pretty detailed about the next steps for that. So we had that public conversation, even though it was after the end of the meeting, about making sure we followed statute and, and rules and guidelines. So we will, we will get a report from our attorney and from the administrator. We asked them to do the proper research and get back with us on that. Let's see, was there anything else? Does anybody else want to follow up anything?
I was going to save discussion about the annexation for commissioner comments.
Okay.
Similar questions. I don't know if Al wants to address some now or just wait.
Yeah, I have a note for, for Al for later, so we'll, we'll do that. Anything, did you need to follow up on anything, Ms. Petito? I think, when can we expect another follow-up anyway on, on the River to Sea?
On the River, on the River to Sea, I don't know that we had a timeframe to bring it back.
We didn't, we didn't give you one, but, well, there should be something tied to the temporary.
We had issued the temporary permit. We also emailed two residents, I believe, the lady that spoke previously. We'd received an email and responded to it explaining that it is just temporary due to the town reaching out, but I have to get with purchasing to find out the timeframe of advertising that. And I don't know if you wanted me to give an update on Veranda Bay, but we did talk to the developer related to our concerns. We had a good conversation. If you want, I can talk about it. If not, I can save it for later.
Yeah, save it for later, so we'll, we'll move on. But I guess the question too is, is there a time limit on a temporary permit for that use? Or do we establish it?
There was. I don't recall the exact time. We'll look it up, though, real quick.
Okay, thank you. All right. Community outreach is closed. Any comments from the board members that want to address some of the consent that we had? Commissioner Hanson?
No.
All right, Commissioner Pennington?
No.
Commissioner Sullivan?
None.
Commissioner O'Brien? Okay. So at this time, I'll take a motion on consent, minus seven S.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I know you were asking for comments, but I do need to pull an item.
Okay, go ahead.
Just need to pull item seven I, just, just because I have a voting conflict, which I'll declare.
Okay, seven I. Thank you for that. Just moving a little bit fast there. Okay, so we'll take a motion on consent with seven I being pulled and seven S being deleted.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of seven I to be discussed and seven S to be removed from the agenda.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, second by Commissioner Sullivan. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. So seven I.
So on, on seven I, Mr. Chair, which is consideration of approval of a RSQ agreement, number 24-033Q, between Flagler County and several contractors. And looking at it, I realize that one of the contractors led construction is a client of my, of the insurance agency that I'm employed at, and while I don't think it's absolutely necessary that I do declare a voting conflict out of an abundance of caution, I am going to do that and file the appropriate 8B form with, with the clerk that I have ready.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other comments on seven I?
No.
All right, I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody wish to speak on seven I? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. All those in favor signify with aye.
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 Abstain.
And one abstention from Commissioner O'Brien. That brings us to general business, which is item eight on the agenda. Eight A is consideration of Flagler County Tourist Development Council Fund 1109 Capital Projects Grant Funding. And this is to request the board consider the applications and recommendation of the TDC and award the capital projects grant funding, authorizing the chair to execute a grant agreement as approved by the county administrator and as approved to legal form by the county attorney. This is presented by Amy Lukasik, our Tourist Development Director. And this follows discussion during workshop earlier.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Amy Lukasik, Tourism Development Director. As you mentioned, you heard this afternoon, the three applications for awarding a capital project grant in the total amount of $745,372. As a reminder, the TDC had recommended full funding to the city of Flagler Beach. You do have the discretion to award the money to the city of Flagler Beach as recommended, or you can distribute and divvy up as, as you, as you see fit based on the presentations you received today.
All right, so we have, we have the three items, right? We have, and the recommendation. Did you state the recommendation?
Yes, recommendation for the full amount of $745,372 to the city of Flagler Beach.
That was from the TDC board.
Yes, from, for phase one and phase two of the beach walk project.
Right, and the other applicants being City of Palm Coast for lighting at Indian Trail Sports Complex and Flagler County's Island House renovation.
Yes, the city of Flagler Beach requested $625,000, and Flagler County requested $745,372.
All right, so at this time, we'll open it up for a discussion on the board to discuss the three options, well, actually, the three projects, but we have multiple options available. Anybody wish to go?
Yeah, Amy, when the TDC, your council, they made the recommendation to fund the Flagler Beach, so they must have discussed this at length. So how, why did they achieve, what did their, what was their rationale to send that to us?
You're correct. They liked all three projects, for what it's worth. The city of Flagler Beach project was appealing to them because they were also doing the renovations of the pier, the beach renourishment project, the new hotel. So it was kind of like they'll have all these new assets and infrastructure, and then, you know, a 40-year-old boardwalk and, and the bathrooms under there. So it was also because they felt like the city of Flagler Beach, they weren't sure if they received the full funding, if they would be able to move forward, so it was important that the board show that support for the project to move forward.
The anniversary coming up too, right?
Yes, and the centennial, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, there were three projects briefed at the TDC that was there, and they were all great projects. And so we're not really declining any of these. We're just trying to pick out the best option that we have at this point. I still have some concerns, not that we shouldn't approve the Flagler Beach project, but concerning timelines, given they have to do things like build the pier, and this, this program, the money supposedly spent within two years of the time it's, it's approved and a contract start and construction start. So we had a lot of discussion about this at our workshop earlier today that was open to the public, and I, I kind of got the feeling that, that there is one of the three projects that absolutely meets all the requirements, is ready to go, and, and that was the city of Palm Coast project for lighting on a number of their fields. So, you know, it's, it's, it's hard now to go back and change anything, but given everything I've heard, I'm, I'm kind of prone to say to maybe split the baby and do half for Flagler Beach to get their first phase going. Their second phase may have time to, to look at things again two years from now when we do the next capital project undertaking. And so to do the lighting for the sports fields, which are clearly strongly supportive of tourism and what they call heads and beds at night as we open up more and more programs with the lighting for visiting teams and things like that. So I'm, I'm at the point where I think they're all good projects, but given everything that I've heard and everything I've heard since the TDC meeting a month or so ago, I'd like to see us divide those two projects in half, give each half, half the money.
Other comments?
I think there's no, there's no doubt that the people that come to this county go to Flagler Beach. You know, that's a, a driving force, the, the boardwalk and the whole area down there. And given the fact that we, again, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner, all good projects, but I think two things that I'm leaning on the side of the Flagler Beach project is take counsel from the TDC council, that, you know, that's, that was their recommendation. And then also the fact that we helped the city of Palm Coast with the Southern Recreation Center just a couple of years ago. So my, my recommendation would be to, to fund the, fully fund the, with the $745,000, the Flagler Beach project.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with Mr. Sullivan that ideally it would be, we could, should split it. But I think if we did that, I don't think we gave either, either community enough money to complete their project. So I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards fully funding the Flagler Beach.
Commissioner Pennington, did you want to add?
Well, I will say, I was thinking about this. We didn't really discuss the third project, which is the Flagler County Princess Place Project. And I think the big thing hanging over that is that the building continues to deteriorate. We didn't come up with a, any kind of discussion there. So, you know, I'm worried about the timing also on the Flagler Project, but, and I could see giving them funding for phase one, but I could go with either other project too for additional funding to split the costs.
And I'll, I'll chime in as I see the three different projects. Two of them benefit iconic landmarks within the city. So the, the project in Princess Place, a historic landmark project within Princess Place, the other, the pier in Flagler Beach, which again is, is every picture that you see for Flagler County more than likely has a picture of the green, trying, the green roof and the pier in it. I think there's some, it's not a perfect application, it's not a perfect submittal. And I think that, again, I worry that if we split, as Commissioner Sullivan said, split the baby, that, that they both become ineffective. So I, I lean, I lean to the Flagler Beach project more than, than the county project, only because I think we have, we have time internally to, to work on the county project. But the city of Flagler Beach is, is moving. They, the pier is, is getting ready to be, to commence construction, and, and they're moving forward. So I, I tend to follow Commissioner O'Brien. Yes, sir?
Yeah, on the, first of all, I don't agree that the city of Palm Coast lighting project for the fields won't happen if, if we don't do fully, fully fund it. That whole project is going to go forward no matter what, and it clearly meets the rules that we have set up for the tourist, from the Tourist Development Council. You can clearly show by, by history that providing more fields for teams to come into town and play, especially after dark, opens, opened, opens that up and absolutely meets the requirements. The other two projects are also very good, and I don't think splitting the baby, as I said before, for the Flag, the city of Flagler Beach project is going to stop it because it's probably going to take more time than we have right now. It may well be that the pier gets built exactly on schedule, everything goes according to plan, we don't have any storms, nothing else happens. There's already been a three-month delay on signing the contract for the pier, having nothing to do with storms. And therefore, I think there'll be time for Flagler Beach to come back for the second phase of their project, which would actually be the promenade, which is really what you want. The first phase, what that does is, 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 is make the restroom bigger and make sure the pier, that area that already exists, the pier, is, is better all around. I won't go into details on that. So I don't think splitting the baby here does anything to either, do anything to hinder the lighting project at, at the city of Palm Coast, other than to help them do something that is clearly in accordance with what the capital projects are supposed to do. I also don't think it's going to stop the city of Flagler Beach here because we're not ever supposed to be funding the entirety of these projects. It's seed money and a percentage of the money to complete the project. The Southern Recreation Center, even though we gave them all $700,000 plus a couple of years ago, that, that was a small percentage of the overall project, which was like $7, $8 million. So I don't think we're stopping anything here. We're just facing the reality of the situation.
Thank you. All right, I don't hear a motion. I'll open it up for public comment.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move that we fully fund the Flagler Beach project.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson and a second by Commissioner O'Brien. Go. At this point, we'll open it up for public comment.
Jane, I'm sorry, Jane Mealy, City of Flagler Beach. I think there's still some confusion as to what we applied for and what we are planning to do. There are three phases to what we are planning to do. One is to fix up the building with the bathrooms and the radio station. One is for the promenade, which is of course the most exciting to people, and the third is the boardwalk. We were told by Ms. Lucas, Lukasik, I always want to put the emphasis in the wrong place, not to apply for the third part because of timing. Those of you who've said that Flagler Beach is why people come to Flagler County are correct, I believe it's 68% of visitors, Amy, is that correct? I forget, there was some high percentage of whoever visitors come to Flagler County come because of the beach. As you said, all of these programs are really nice, but I really believe, of course, I'm a little biased, but I think ours will do more for tourism or tourism in general. If you do the lighting at the Palm Coast facilities, you'll get more sports people, but then they'll come to the beach. And if you do the Palm, the county one, maybe you'll get some weddings, but then they'll come to the beach. So I think it's important that you understand, you're only funding, if you fund the whole thing, 28%. So splitting the baby is not going to help us at all. This is a very, each part is over a million dollars. So if you give us 740, whatever thousand, you're giving us 28% of the entire thing. So I hope you'll continue to support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My name is Ron Long, I'll make mine short and sweet, basically what Commissioner Sullivan said.
Thank you. Next speaker? Anybody else? All right, seeing nobody approach, we'll bring it back to the board. I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner O'Brien. This is on fully funding Phase 1 and 2, the appropriation as recommended by TDC, right? Commissioner Hanson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so seeing that, any other questions for staff or?
I did want to address Ms. Mealy's comments.
Go ahead.
I think she left prior to our, finishing our discussion, was that we did say though, I just think it's worth a discussion, is that the city project does bring heads in beds because it's nighttime lighting that they're adding, which means there'll be nighttime games, which means people would stay over. So it's a very good, well, and whether we go through this or not, I do want the city to know, it was a very well thought out plan. You brought your planning in, you had your lighting already addressed, and so I felt it was an excellent plan, and it really had a lot of merit and added to tourism. This beach project is, I feel, a reach, but I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, just to point out, Phase 1 of the Flagler, City of Flagler Beach project doesn't put a lot of heads in beds, it's building restrooms where some facilities already exist. And the question in my mind is Phase 2, I want Phase 2 to happen, it's going to be a great addition to the beach, I just don't think they're going to be able to get it under contract, build it, and for us, you know, they don't get the money until after they actually start building, and they come in with invoices, say it costs us this much to do this phase of the project. My point is, I don't think that's going to happen in Phase 2 before the two-year time limit is up, and therefore, it can be reapplied for, and with this backing, I think maybe we could even get more money overall to Phase 2 and Phase 3 of that project. So I just think we're putting the cart a little ahead of the horse here, and we have a very straightforward, locked-in project for the City of Palm Coast that will clearly put heads in beds, more than they are now, whereas the tourism, which I admit, at the beach and all that, and I think this is a great project, I just don't think they can get it done in the timeframe that this money is supposed to be spent on. So that's where I'm coming from, and that's why I will vote against the motion, not because I don't like the project, but because I just think it's the wrong way to go right now.
Any other comments on the board? All right, call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries three to two. Thank you, Mr. Kasek.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As a follow-up to that, I think, I'm alarmed about the Princess Place issue and the comments that it's falling apart, and I think it's worthwhile to have further discussion on that with the county administrator and see if we can't get the project started, get some seed money out of this next budget, and see if we can't start doing something out there to, so we don't lose that building.
We'll put that in your notes, so when we address it in December, when we come back for budget priorities, we'll bring it forward.
Yeah, we'll bring it forward, yeah. I think we should do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to our public hearings. These are quasi-judicial. Let's see, is the smoking one legislative or quasi-judicial, Mr. Hadid? These are all quasi, pardon?
Legislative.
Legislative, okay. So 9B is the second and final reading of an ordinance prohibiting smoking and vaping in county parks. This is where requested by the board approve and adopt the ordinance on the second reading. Mr. Hadid, did you want to summarize that?
I'll just summarize it very briefly. This is implementing state law that authorizes counties to prohibit all forms of smoking and vaping except for cigars, unfiltered cigars, within all the lands that they own that are parks and lands they own that are on the beach. So that would mean smoking would be banned within our parks, and with respect to the beach, it would involve those parks that we own publicly, such as Palacompah, Bay Park, et cetera.
All right, great, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the final reading of the ordinance prohibiting smoking and vaping in county parks.
Second?
A motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Go ahead and open this up for public comment. Anybody wishes to address us on this item? Come up to the podium, state your name. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Yes, sir. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, last time, and I'll be honest with you, I haven't read all the background this time, but there was a question concerning cigar smoking at the parks, and the fact that even though we passed this ordinance, you'll still be able to smoke cigars in the park, and I don't think, has that changed, or have we come up with a workaround on that?
No, I mean, the legislature will not permit us to ban the smoking of unfiltered cigars, big cigar, protected by big cigar.
As crazy as it sounds.
And that's, so I'm really bringing that out to point out that, I know, the first time this is passed, somebody goes out to the park, and people are going to be smoking cigars, and I go, how is this possible?
I just want to point out, Mr. Hadid, we were told that if Amendment 3 on marijuana were to pass, we would not be able to add that to the ordinance as well, that the constitutional, that amendment does not allow for us to ban a local, to ban marijuana smoke.
Well, that's because it's a constitution, it's part of the constitution, and we cannot legislate anything that changes our constitution. So that's why you should vote no on 3.
Cigar, marijuana will be allowed.
Is the wording, address smoking of the amendment?
I believe so, right?
Because if they pass enabling legislation, maybe we have an out that way.
It will be your constitutional right to smoke marijuana everywhere because of the way the amendment's done.
Right, and it's, once it's part of the constitution, we cannot legislate anything that changes.
We can't fix it.
What we have to, what we have to do is see how the legislature implements whatever that vote is, and then accordingly, from there, we will act or not act.
But, yes, that's right.
Some more to come.
We cannot ban cigars.
But yes, I thank for Commissioner Sullivan bringing that up, because I got a lot of comments about the cigars, and our hands are tied on that. I mean, it is legislated down that we can't, thank the cigar lobby.
Big cigar.
Big cigar.
Big cigar.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Pennington. We've done public comment, we'll call the question, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. All right, 9C, quasi-judicial, project number 2024080024, says a request for an appeal of the Planning and Development Board's decision proving a special exception for outdoor storage at 2150 South Old Dixie Highway. This time I'll call for ex parte communications. Commissioner Hanson, any?
There's been several emails that I've read on this, but that's it.
Right, they're all, I think, part of the, added to the public record.
Right.
Commissioner Pennington?
Yeah, just the resident emails.
Okay.
Resident emails.
Okay, Commissioner O'Brien?
Just the emails.
Yep, same here. Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Mangle?
Adam Mangle, Growth Management Director, good evening. We have our processes here, and in this case, the applicant will be the appellant, so we'll afford them 15 minutes to be able to make their presentation. I'll do my best to keep my presentation to 10 minutes. And so much of this was the same as what was presented to the planning board at its special exception hearing, and so this is the parcel location, this is the future land use designation of the property, commercial, high intensity, and then the zoning, the C2 zoning for the parcel, you can see where it abuts, then the neighborhood in Treetop to the south within Plantation Bay. All of this being a flood zone X, not a special flood hazard area, soils are, for the most part, in good shape. You do have, though, well, it does show up as wet of all things, at least down that corner there where we see the wetlands that are adjoining to the southwest of the property. So this is that language that I had presented previously to the planning board describing the project, 48 RV or boat spaces. There is a new plan that was submitted after the planning board's hearing. That new plan was intended to meet the planning board's condition of a 45-foot setback to the south, and so the applicant effectively went back to the drawing board, tried to reconfigure it, you'll see that plan here in a moment, I also included it in your packet. So with that new plan, there are 57 spaces, and there was a south canopy that I referenced here in the planning board presentation. That south canopy was actually removed by the time it made it to planning board, that was in there through TRC, but it was removed by the time it made it to planning board because of 100-foot setback from the residential units to the south. Canopy height, 14.5 feet, minimum space width on the initial plan was 14 feet, the new plan chose it at 12 feet. Electrical connections for charging batteries, utility connections otherwise would not be provided, and then construction plans meet the minimum requirements for height setbacks, including buffers and tree protection. Site lighting plan that was also included in the packet, and I have a graphic here that shows that, shows no light cast off beyond the parcel lines. Were substantial objections and comments, you had those in your packet, we had those in the oversized section on the agenda, so you had those, had compiled those for your reference. We had Phase 1, which is the building, received at site plan approval back in 2022, all the improvements required in place and operable by the time we did our final inspection. Retention pond was to be moved northward, made a presentation about this before a planning board, and correspondence now indicates that the pond was moved, and so in, contrary to what we presented to the planning board and the information that was provided to the planning board, that now testimony, I think, has been introduced that says, or at least by the applicant, pond was in fact moved, and so they wanted me to mention that, but that was not stated at the planning board that I recall. St. John's River Water Management District provides stormwater for the entirety of the project, wetlands in the southwest corner preserved, and the parcel owner is the 278 Storage, valid Florida corporation tax certificate issued for last year's property taxes, and then those taxes now have been paid. So that's another new piece versus what was presented to the planning board. So here's that graphic that was included within the planning board packet, this is an excerpt from the landscape plans, and this shows the buffer that would be placed along the south property line. This is part of the consideration planning board included within their special exception deliberations, this was identical, no changes on this plan, but this shows that planted buffer to be provided, it was measured at 25, and planning board ultimately said that buffer needs to be 45 feet. These were the details, this was the materials, planting materials, the number, quantity that were to be planted, and so this was from that same landscape sheet. And this was our tree mitigation calculation, also from that, I believe from the same sheet, that shows the 56 inches of tree preservation, then you had these plantings that were part of that, were worked into these calculations. So notice down there at the bottom, we have our VUA areas, we have our 23 VUA islands provided, where there was 13.65 that were required. And then this is that photometric site plan that I mentioned, what's important here is that along the property line, you see a reference 0.0, 0.1, that's a very nominal cast off of light, and that's measured, should be measured at the ground level, but you see there, along the property line, south and west, what that was showing then was the cast off of light not casting onto the neighboring property. This, again, being the old configuration, the two shaded areas you see in the center are the two buildings, the canopies, the one to the south was not covered, and this was presented to the planning board. These are the light pole details, part of the lighting plan. Important here, it shows 32-foot overall pole length with an eight-foot embedment. So you had 24 feet ultimate height above grade. Now, these were the different lighting schematics that were part of this. You have then in the bottom left, the under canopy lights, all of these being LED lights, and this also was presented to the planning. And then, it had come up before, and one of the items seemingly unrelated, but it had come up as a commentary in the public comment, so we included this in our presentation to the planning board. This was the buffer, augmented buffer, that was provided along what would have been the southeast, what is the southeast corner of the property, this is where the pond is located. And so this is that replanting plan, if you recall, some of the correspondents said that where, before, the applicant had said, we're going to, the owner at the time, the applicant in 2022, at the time of the site plan approval for the large building, for the personal storage, had said we're going to retain this buffer, well, it was removed. And so this was the plan to come back in, augment it with material and plantings that went above our code requirements, and this is example of what that looks like in its planted condition. So realizing that when you plant these, these are not of that sufficient height, they will have to grow, but this is that south line that we're seeing, the pond is off to our left, homes and Treetop are off to the right, this also was presented to the planning board. And here's another view of the same. And so this is my summary on what the planning board had done, these were not part of the planning board presentation, these are, in effect, the summary of what had happened in that planning board meeting and the approval. Planning board approved it with a 3-2 vote, one abstention for Mr. Corbett, and then the conditions were development to occur in substantial conformity of the design drawings, attached to the special exception request, access hours from 6 to 10, no work to commence without issuance of a county land development permit, no occupancy limitation of the RV and boat storage used until inspections are complete and all permits are finalled out, site lighting utilized dark sky methods, no business may operate from the premises with the business tax receipt, however, the parking of commercial vehicles and equipment shall be permitted, compliance with the Florida Fire Prevention Code, and then increased southern buffer with 25 to 45 feet. Planning board order reflecting that was dated July 17, 2024, recorded on July 18. Appeal was filed August 16, 2024. The appellant's were of record, the four individuals that are the appellant's are within the 300-foot notification, and each of them did speak at the July 9, 2024 Planning and Development Board meeting. So specific to the two plans, this is the sheet C002, the one that showed the two buildings, then along the south line, no canopy, so what these, when I refer to buildings, they're canopies, and so that center area with the two stacked parking areas, parking spaces, those are canopies. canopies for that center and to the north. To the south, no canopy. And you can see the distance there, the separation distance. And then this was the plan that was submitted after, I believe it was very close to the timing of the appeal, may even have been a day before the appeal was filed. And this was submitted by the applicant in an attempt to show that their alternate plan meeting the 45-foot setback. So I'll just go back, show these two again. This is the one that was presented to the planning board. And this is the one that had the 45-foot setback. And what that shows is 100-foot separation from the property line to the first canopy. So that's consistent with that 100-foot setback that we require, those lines that you see there that are drawn. Those are showing that canopy edge. And so that, I have a zoom in on this a little bit closer. It gets fuzzier, unfortunately, but here's that, that one that was submitted to the planning board. And then our count on those, 11 covered spaces at the north, 24 covered spaces in the center, 13 uncovered spaces at the south, 48 total spaces, 14 feet wide. Then here's the zoom in on the other set. And then this works out to 19 covered spaces with three uncovered for 22 total in that row to the, that group to the left. The one that's in the center, 18 covered spaces, three uncovered, 21 total parking spaces. And then along the pond, on the right-hand side, 14 uncovered spaces, total of 57 spaces that are there. And again, you've got the closest one, closest canopy at 101.01 feet from the property line.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
The front of this parcel is the storage building.
Yes, sir.
So is that also have restricted hours?
It did, and I didn't have the copy on those, but I think it corresponds to the 6:00 to 10:00 on the gate access. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just from my benefit, since I was going to ask the same question. There is a storage building, right, that's multi-story?
There is.
Where does it, can you show me?
Right there.
Yeah, you can see it at the.
It's the top part.
It is.
Yeah, okay.
So that's why I was just wondering, because the approval is predicated on 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, but, you know, if there's no gate and people are accessing the building, you know, is there, there going to be different access restrictions?
There is a gate. I'm going to see if the.
Yeah, the back, those are many warehouses in the back. So there's a gate restricting access behind the building already.
It's actually to the west. It's a keypad, and it's, and one of the, one of the issues was that Florida Fire Prevention Code citation that's there is a reference that refers to width of access.
Okay.
And so the appeal, and this is the critical part that we have to make sure that we keep every party here involved with, and realizing I've already given you some information that was extraneous that wasn't provided to the planning board. But much of it was based on that, that plan that was submitted by the applicant to meet the 45-foot requirement. Your appeal, the appeal filed by the appellant's is based on the record. No new evidence can be presented. And so the critical decision for the planning board is, or for the Board of County Commissioners in considering the appeal, whether the Planning and Development Board's decision was supported by competent substantial evidence, whether due process was accorded, and then finally whether the essential requirements of law, primarily the nine criteria for the special exception within the LDC have been observed. So those are your, your points that you're weighing here, in your capacity, in your quasi judicial capacity here. And with that, I've got some options available for you. These will likely look very familiar, but in this case, an approval will be granting the appeal. So it runs a little counter to your intuition with this, but approval on this, as it's presented to you, it's an appeal. So that would be approving the appeal filed by the appellant's. A denial would deny their filed appeal, uphold the Planning and Development Board's special exception, and leave that in place. And then you could alternatively remand the special exception back to the planning board for further proceedings, direction on how to, how the Planning and Development Board failed in one of those areas, that competent substantial evidence, accorded due process, and/or observed the essential requirements of law. And then you could also continue this. And then have this item here that should the board approve the appeal overturning the Planning and Development Board's approval, the denial is not made with prejudice, as it was mentioned there, and that an owner or an applicant may subsequently refile special exception request. The special exception is not time barred, like our rezonings are. Rezonings have a six-month clock. A special exception for the same or similar request is not subject to a six-month time restriction. So with that, I'll close. Submit report for the record. Wait any questions or comments? Certainly, the appellant's are here. They're going to make their presentation. And then also in the chambers are representatives, Mr. Merrill and Ms. Buck, for the owner, the appellee. Go ahead, Commissioner Sullivan.
I may have missed this in reading through the material, but when we did Colbert Lane, we did that little storage area over there on Colbert Lane. We made a big deal about, could they do maintenance on their vehicles once they're stored? And the answer was no, they can't do any maintenance at all. Is, is there a rule on that for this facility?
We didn't put that in, and that, if you'll see, the closest thing I think we came to is no operation, let's see, no business operating. And so I think that's probably the number five, is probably the closest thing I can say there, but that's, that's not necessarily the same as changing well, things like that. I think the applicant, I want to say that may have come up at the planning board. We'll have to look and see if others agree or not, where there are to be rules that are established by the operator. I thought that that was mentioned there, but don't quote me on that.
So that's, that's still open?
Still, it's not part of our criteria.
That was my question.
All right, and as you, as we proceed, we will have, how much, how many minutes from the applicant?
15 minutes.
Okay, and then, did you want to have time from the original applicant, which is now called the?
I was saying, appellee, appellee. So they'll have, I think, probably, given their due 15 minutes, I don't know if they'll need that much time.
And then, I think as you had stated, this is, we are not introducing new evidence. This is the same material, other than the site plan. The site plan has changed.
Correct.
The proposed site plan, but you're not introducing any new evidence at this time.
The only thing to mention, I did need to mention this for the record, you had received an email that I forwarded about a two-year time limit, and just for record purposes, we haven't had a two-year time limit expiration placed on any special exception that I know of, at least 20 years. And so that, that was raised, and it was mentioned as, I think, a flaw in the procedure that would have nullified the approval, but we haven't had that. And so to, I think to buttress what the planning board had decided, they placed the conditions on the property as was appropriate, and special exceptions run with the land. And so the idea would be that that special exception, once it's in place, stays there for, basically for time and all eternity until, until it's rescinded or amended.
And the other item was, there had been emails and discussion at the planning board about the owners or different, you know, not kind things about the owners and research about their other properties, which is not what we're discussing tonight. This is about the site plan and the special exception for the, for the land.
Correct. It was placed on the record, so it was presented, but it is not germane, in my opinion, to the special exception approval.
All right, just want to clarify that. All right, so any other questions for Mr. Mangle? If not, we'll have the applicant come to do a presentation, and you have 15 minutes if you need it. Yes, sir. State your name for the record.
Harold Magahi, 4 Treetop Trail, Woman Beach. I live right behind the fence where they took the trees down. Nobody wants to hear about the trees right now. I understand that we have a challenge ahead of us. We have to stay in our lane. We're asking you to review a decision that was made by one of your volunteer boards, who was providing a very valuable service to you guys in the community. I just think there's enough noise around this particular project, and it means a lot to a lot of people, that it just should take another look at it. Not going to present any new evidence. I'm going to go back to the beginning, and that's what nobody wants to hear. So if you don't mind, I'm going to read to you the motion, okay, that was, happened on January 11, 2022. The motion is as follows. All improvements are required to be in place, operable, and inspected prior to the initiation of the use on the parcel. The retention pond to be moved northward. This is news tonight. This is typical of these guys, okay, that has been moved to this date, no one has known that it has been moved, but I'll continue. The retention pond moved northward of its present location to provide area for use of natural vegetation as screen buffer to the residential lots south of the subject property. Then motion was granted, a motion by Mr. Connor was given. Mr. Lamato offered an amendment to the motion to move the pond further north. Maker of the motion and the second each agreed to the amendment. The motion carried unanimously. I also want to read you a couple of notes from the minutes that day regarding the owner and the presenter at that time, past storage, Mr. Nevins. It said that the board was, Mr. Buck, okay, I have a question. A number of the board members appreciated that the applicant was willing to move the pond northward and preserve the natural vegetation. The board asked Ms. Buck, who's here tonight, and Mr. Nevins at that time, if they would move the pond, if they would save the natural vegetation. The answer was yes. Okay, now, we all know, everybody's heard this story before, that the vegetation went down. It came down. Wasn't my fault. I don't know who did it, but it came down. I lived behind it. I saw it. It's gone. All right. Now, we've heard from the applicant, and we've also heard from Mr. Mangle, that there was an agreement between the county and the developer to replace those trees that were taken down. I'm not sure who in the county made that deal, because the deal was with the planning board. The planning board said, "We don't like this. We don't like what you've got. We want the natural vegetation left." So who authorized someone on staff or someone on the board to negotiate with the developer to say a motion? Okay, a motion. They negotiated the value of that motion away. Why have motions? Doesn't make any sense. If the staff can then go in and say, the developer says, geez, you know, I don't like that. I don't like what I agreed to. I'd like to do it this way. Is that okay? I don't believe it is. If I make a deal with you, I'm expected to stick to my deal, and I would think the same would be true of you. All right, now, we've also heard a lot about who took the trees down. This is kind of interesting, all right? We've heard that the current owner took possession of the property in August of 2022. I know the day the trees came down. The trees came down on January 5 of 2023. How do I know that? Well, as I say, I live there. And when the guy with the bulldozer was driving, knocking the trees down, and when I went out and tried and stopped him, he gave me the finger and just ignored me. It's not Tiananmen Square. It's a few trees. I'm not going to go out there and stand in his way. But he's taking down the trees on that date. How do I know it was that date? I made three calls that day. I called Mr. Givens, who was the owner. I called Jack Corbett, who lives in Treetop, and I called Mr. Mangle. I talked to two of them. Mr. Mangle did not return my call. I called him again another day. The day later, he also did not return that call. When I spoke to Mr. Givens, he said something very interesting to me. All right, he said to me, I said, geez, they're taking the trees down. Oh, they're not supposed to. And they're also, they're supposed to move the pond. He said, "I paid to have the pond moved, so don't worry about that aspect of it." So I didn't. I let it go with that. But I'm back to my same conclusion, my same position is, how can you make a deal with somebody and renege on that deal? Now, here we go. This was changed tonight for the very first time, so it takes a little sting out of my argument. They admitted the mistake about the trees, all right? And I have it on record that when Mr. Merrill, on a couple of occasions, stated that the previous owner took down the trees. Now, I've just demonstrated that maybe the previous owner didn't take down the trees. Maybe the current owner took down the trees. And I want to refer back to what I said about Mr. Nevins at the board meeting. Everybody liked the guy. I liked the guy. I went up and I shook his hand, and he told me, "I'm going to be a good neighbor." Well, he was a good neighbor until he sold out. And, and then we have new neighbors who aren't, don't seem to be quite as good. So my point is that no one had mentioned that the pond hadn't been moved, though there were two parts of that motion that they violated. So that says to me, if, and it says right here in the motion, that they can't operate there until they fulfill those two obligations of the motion. They didn't. So how are they operating on there? And how are they asking, coming back to you and asking for a favor? I just don't see how that works. In my mind, they should not be allowed to have the special exception. No one cares about the fact that they have the C2, which is okay for the storage shed. We've got that. Nobody objected that night. That was something that they could do by right. And as a matter of fact, the board did a very good job that night, because the board's hands are kind of tied when something like that occurs. But the board recognized, and I'll address this a little bit later, that aesthetics were important. So the board said, well, maybe you could move the pond, and maybe you could do just a little bit to keep the vegetation, and these guys, someone ignored it. So until tonight, you know, and I hear that the pond's been moved, and I'll look over my fence tomorrow, and I don't know if they moved it this morning. I don't know, but it has not been moved. I can't, maybe a foot, maybe two feet, I don't know. But I watched through this whole process every day. The guy took the trees down, he saw them building the pond. No, nothing happened. There was, there was no movement of the pond. They're going to show you drawings that the pond moved a little bit, but I don't believe it. I don't believe anything these guys say anymore. That was a, that's kind of a low blow exposed. They didn't even tell the board this. At the night of that presentation, Adam had to stand up there and say the pond hadn't been moved, so they didn't even tell him the truth or provide him timely information. Excuse me. So now we say, okay, what do we do? What do we do about that? Well, there's nothing we can do about it now. It's gone. So let me move on to my next point, because I think that that is significant enough to say, maybe we should take a look at these guys and what they're doing. Issue number two, does this really rise to the level of a special exception? We've heard a lot that, okay, this is a process here that's not, not injurious to the neighborhood in terms of its use. And we've heard quite a bit from the attorney saying with his expertise that this is, this is a good use of that site, and C2, which he doesn't mention, does not allow outside storage. It's prohibited. So if it's prohibited, then that special exception bar should be pretty high. I just don't think you'd just say, oh, it's a special exception to something that is prohibited. And there's also state law, and that in some cases, a compelling reason needs to be established for a special exception to be granted. And there is case law that has demonstrated that a special exception could be granted if the aesthetics are not taken into consideration. And lastly, and I'll let some of my constituents talk more about this, the nine reasons, you know, that it had to hit nine reasons in order to comply with the fact that it's a special exception. And if you look at it, most of these, a lot of them are subjective. They really are, you know, and I'll get to, I'll get to a couple of them that just, I don't want to read them to you. You're just going to bore everybody to death. And I've got other people who will, who can do a better job than I in talking about what these requirements are. But we go to number, number nine is probably the most significant, where it says, "The economic effect of the proposed use on adjacent and nearby properties shall be positive." All right. Treetop is a very residential neighborhood in Plantation Bay. We've had for years a natural tree canopy behind us. None of us knew, I'll excite you, when I bought the property, that it was zone C2 behind me, and something industrial could be built there, and it has been, and that's okay. That's by right. But now we're hearing that, you're saying that that fact that this special exception now, and not talking about the storage facility, excuse me, the special exception for granting of the RV and boat storage facility would not be a negative impact on that neighborhood. How can you say that? Just logically, just look at it and say, gee, you know, we've got natural vegetation, now we have boats and lights, and isn't that going to impact the price, the value of our property? And we actually had someone speak at the, a real estate agent speak at the special exception meeting and testify that, yes, it was impacting the prices of those properties. Now, you're going to hear, oh, you need to have a study. How do we know that? Well, if I look at some of these items here that the staff analysis has, talking about, and Mr. Merrill talks about, the fact that there's a demand for RV and boat storage in Flagler County. Maybe there is. I don't know about that. No one's has done a study for that to demonstrate that to me, that that's something that's necessary. necessary. So once again, it's a special exception for prohibited use, and they're saying it won't have an impact on the values in our neighborhood. I just don't find that to be true. Let's see, what else can I talk about?
We'll let you know there's four minutes, so...
I know. Okay. I'm rambling on. All right. So I'll conclude because I've got a couple of people here who can talk about these issues much better than I can. But come back to the same thing. You make a deal, you stick with the deal. If you don't stick with the deal, you can't come back and ask for a favor. Thank you.
Clock's running. Who's next?
Am I allowed to use the remainder of his minutes?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm not ready yet, so please bring it back to his...
But you're talking as the applicant, right?
Yeah.
Is it just the one gentleman or is it the group? There's four gentlemen, four people that signed on the paperwork. Okay, so you have 3:44 left.
Actually, four minutes or something.
Come on up. They can't hear you on the speaker by talking to us.
Makes it easier for you to see when I mention a certain number by talking. Not what I can. I might have to talk fast. My name is Alan Sanford from 14 Treetop Circle in Plantation Bay. I'm going to talk about number five right now, and you can see what that has to do with it. It starts out with a screening and buffering. Screening is the first word. I feel that there's a failure to reduce into writing anything that could provide for or protect compliance of an adequate screening buffer for the adjacent residents. Nothing specific was reduced in writing or provide or protect screening buffer. On July 9th, the planning board meeting, I explained in my, that my bedroom is 25 feet from this proposed development. I expressed that if a development is grades, grade is raised to three or four feet higher than the adjacent grade, that a six-foot fence in turn ends up with no better than a relatively three-to-two-foot value for screening. The board is, listen, the board listened and understood. They specifically discussed the topic of how they might improve screening and buffering by widening the area of existing vegetation. They discussed how the taller, thicker trees would help in screening. They decided to vote for 20 extra feet to allow for more natural vegetation to remain. Kim, the engineer, had previously said that only 15 feet is needed to slope down from grade and would leave 10 feet of existing trees adjoining our neighborhood. The board felt more vegetation was better for the screening for this development, so they added 20 feet to that, 10. Adam had mentioned more than once the county could do a better job this time to make sure that the trees aren't removed again. There was no mention of the 16-minute discussion by the board about the improving the screening or how they felt the extra 20 foot of natural vegetation would help be the screen buffer. Most importantly, there is nothing reduced in writing about the 45-foot buffer that mentions anything about natural vegetation or the screening aspect and intent for the additional 20 foot. As it stands, there's currently nothing in writing to prevent the whole screen buffer vegetation from being clear-cut to the property lines again, like they are down the street from us in front of our neighbor's house. Lighting, number six. The only thing reduced to writing after long discussions about lighting specifics was the site lighting to utilize dark sky methods. The guidelines that define dark sky lighting are found on the website darksky.org. Some of the principles include using more, no more lighting than what is needed, using the lowest level of light required, recommending warmer lights. The applicant's plans for extremely unnecessary excessive amount of light fixtures, unnecessarily long fixtures with some of the brightest white lights available called meta ice with very high lumen power. Because of this, their lighting plan is already non-compliant with the dark sky methods. If they're being sincere about using dark sky methods, they could start by saving themselves tens of thousands by cutting way back on the light fixtures electricity, installing huge amount of lights to put them on a dimmer makes no sense. And lastly, what I can get in about number nine. Residents have long voiced their concerns about not wanting special exception for outside boat and storage. They might also allow dump trucks, heavy equipment, and other commercial vehicles to be parked starting, starting their diesel engines before work in the morning. Noise and fumes morning at night, dump trucks, et cetera, obviously have a negative economic effect on our home values, not to mention quality of life. They assured us this wasn't going to happen because they were applying for a high-end boat and RV storage that would have high standards and prices which would not be compatible with commercial parking prices. Because of this, their assurances, the topic was never mentioned at the board meeting. Somehow, this was able to get put into writing, that they can now turn it into a commercial parking lot with dump trucks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to talk so fast.
All right. Yes, sir. Your turn.
Thank you. Evening, Board. Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole for the record, One Daytona Boulevard. I want to start by saying thanks to all the folks that have been involved in this process. You know, this is unusual for me. I've been doing this for a little bit over 38 years. All I do is zoning cases. I think I've had three or four in those 38 years where it actually was in appellate setting like this. So it's unique, I would think, to you guys too, probably. So I'm going to talk about some things that aren't the normal, here's what we're here to talk about because we're not rehearing this. This is a very narrow focus, and I guess Al could elaborate if he wanted to, but I'm going to just highlight a few things that I think happened that are part of this record, just sort of recalling some things that happened. And then I'm going to make a couple of comments that are legal, and that's about it for me, so it shouldn't take long. I want to start by saying, you know, we had a lot of back and forth with the folks that are here appealing. We had meetings on site. We made significant concessions about things like lighting and setbacks and buffering. A lot of it had to do with what the first gentleman spent most of his time talking about, which isn't the special exception, which is the existing building that was approved with the site plan approval. There were conditions placed on that site plan approval. One of them was the pond had to be moved to a location where it now exists. We, I think, my best of my recollection, we said that's what happened at the planning board, maybe, maybe not. In either event, it is not part of the special exception. It's the property next door. And so the pond was built where it was supposed to be built. What happened was the contractor went out, took the trees down, and they were supposed to leave in the back. So since then, and this is all in the context of something other than the special exception for the boat and RV storage, we've since planted trees, which Adam showed you. What we're here to talk about is not that. It's about the special exception. We spent a great deal of time, three and a half, four hours, I think, at the planning board with testimony and evidence, and there's hundreds of pages that are in your record that I'm not going to go over again. That clearly showed compliance with the criteria, that some of which was spoken about again tonight. And there's your expert right here. I don't have to say anything. It's in the, it's in your packet. If you read through what Adam said, very clearly checked every single box off. And the planning board saw that. They recognized, and it was part of their, part of their decision. I think one of the things that truly swayed them was, you know, I heard the one gentleman say, "I didn't ever know that there was C2 heavy commercial zoning right in my backyard." Well, it's been there for quite some time. And the guys that bought this property, they bought the property knowing that. They were able to build the storage, and they know the rest of the property can be built for a bunch of other things. I'm just going to hit a couple of them. These are things that I said at the planning board. I went down the list just to highlight a few things, just to get an appreciation for what could go there if we didn't do what I think is an extremely passive use. And I think the planning board saw it as such. Retail sales and services, boat and mobile home sales and services, car washes, mini warehouse and water slides, auction parlors, automobile service stations, bars, bowling alleys, employment agencies, game room and arcades for pools, billiards, pinball machines, jukeboxes, or other coin-operated amusements, nightclubs, restaurants, automobile rental agencies, automobile repair, bus stations, automobile sales, pawn shops, hotels, motels, or other tourist accommodations, hospitals. Now, mind you, I think Adam made it clear to the planning board that all of those things and other things that are on this list, that I'm not going to go through the whole list, could be done, I believe it was with a 10-foot landscape buffer between the houses and all these uses, the hospital with, I think we talked about building heights, things that are going to be a lot bigger than we're talking about here with these canopies. And we came in and said, after all the back and forth of the neighbors, we would, we'll do 25 feet. We'll do more than twice what's required for something that we think has a very limited effect on you compared especially to what's there. Now, if we were here and we had cows out there and we were egg-zoned, which you guys have had a lot of zoning cases that I've been involved in and many others, where that's what happened, you know? It was agriculture for quite some time. Somebody wanted to come in and put a business there. That's not the situation. This has been contemplated at this interchange of Old Dixie and I-95 to be commercial for many, many years. And that was the reasonable investment-backed expectation, which is a term of law and art that we use for a property owner's rights when he buys the property. That's what it said. So I think all of the things that we did along the way, I felt were very reasonable. So the three things that are in the staff report that are the three rules for an appellate proceeding, which, you know, normally you guys are the judge and jury, right? When I'm here before you, I'm pleading my case, and you get to make the decision. That's the end of it. In this case, the planning board was the judge and jury. You guys are a panel of appellate judges that have a very narrow focus of what you look at. I'm not trying to restrict you. I'm just trying to tell you that's, this is a unique situation for me as well. When you look at that record, I see, it's chock full of testimony from your staff, from statements at the planning board that absolutely gave you competent and substantial evidence to support the meeting of those criteria. And I'd be happy to answer any questions beyond that, but I think it's all evident right in the package that you have before you. The second point is, was due process given. Now, we had two unrequired neighborhood meetings, lengthy meetings, three and a half hours of opportunity to flush it all out. If that's not due process, I don't know what is. And the final thing is probably something that you guys don't encounter often. So I actually, this is the one thing that I brought that's new to the table, if you will, but it's a legal point. So I think it's, and Al can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's a fair point. The essential requirements of law is the last criteria that you guys, as the appellate judges, are here to rule on. And when you think about that intuitively, well, you know, essential requirements. What's essential? What does that really mean? Well, so I went and found a case in the Third District Court of Appeal, and I've shared this with your staff, so it's of the record. I didn't get it to the clerk, but now it's in the record. It's yours. The required departure from the essential requirements of law means something far beyond legal error. It means an inherent illegality or irregularity, an abuse of judicial power, an act of judicial tyranny perpetrated with disregard of procedural requirements resulting in a gross miscarriage of justice. I just can't imagine you guys thinking that your planning board and your staff, who I find to be extremely competent, including your legal department, who was there and had their hands on this the entire time, fit that category that I just read to you.
Okay, Mr. Mangle. Questions for Mr. Mangle?
Please.
Okay. That's fine. I just want to make sure there wasn't any questions following that presentation. Okay. So we open it up for public comment?
I'm going to have a question for Mr. Mangle.
Okay. That's why...
So could I, since I didn't have time left, can I reserve time in case there are other questions that come up as a result of things that people say? And I want to ask a question procedurally to Al, I suppose. This is not a public hearing, right? This is actually the opportunity for the appellant and the appellee to present to you, and we don't reopen the hearing to public, do we?
Good question.
I haven't done this in many years. Sorry.
Well, we're not redoing the hearing. We can't redo the hearing, but I think people can make public comment. They just need to understand that they can't address items of evidence. They can only deal with the appeal.
Okay, so give them, give the public a little bit of clear, just some instructions on what they can and can't speak to.
But for instance, if a member of the public wants to complain that the buffers are inadequate or that it adversely affects the neighborhood in a way not found by the planning board, they would not be permitted to do that. They've got, they've got to identify legal error. And what the planning board did.
State your name.
Beverly Nicolar, Five Treetop Trail. I backed right up against the pond. When they started this, they told us they were going to leave our trees, a buffer around the pond. They took every tree, took all of our privacy. The lighting, you look out, our master bedroom is in the back. The lighting, you look outside, you'd think it was daylight. I shouldn't have to put darkening blinds on my windows because of them. With everything that they've done that they shouldn't have done, what makes anybody think that they're going to do this right? Put boats in there that are going to have gas cans in them, are going to have all kinds of stuff in them, so we get hurricanes. This stuff is going to come to us. And they're going to rent? They want to rent to commercial vehicles? You don't know. They're going to have ladders. They're going to have all that kind of stuff. And we're the ones that are going to pay for this. We're the ones that are not going to be comfortable with our life as it has been. It was a storage center, and that was fine. But this is going too far. When you've got boat and RV storage right down the road, we don't need it. Let us have our, some of our life back anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? As long as you're not signed as one of the four.
Ed DiMartino, 2000 South Old Dixie Highway.
Welcome.
I've been going around and around for several weeks or more over this situation. Not that I have a problem with the surveys on the property and on my property. According to my survey, their land doesn't go back as far, or their land goes back farther than my land. I've got an affidavit from Flagler County Abstract that says these properties are supposed to be contiguous, the rear line, and their survey shows that they're 85-foot farther back than mine, which would put the pond, would put the storage area, would put everything over the line. Now, I've got surveys. I've talked to three survey companies. Nobody can agree. I don't know why we're doing business in the county with these people if they can't get one survey right. I've talked to Mr. Mangle about it on Friday because I just got some information, and he pointed out on one of his surveys that that 85-foot is mentioned on the, on the survey for the storage unit, but it's on the east side of the, on the east side of the property. There's no mention of it on the west side where I border of that 85-foot line. So there is, is, the survey does admit it's there, but they don't tell us what it's for. Now, on my survey, it's showing that that's the end of my property. So as I said, Flagler County Abstract researched it and said my property line is contiguous with theirs. So there's a question. I've been in contact with two lawyers, can't get any help from them. I questioned the county attorney last week. He was no help. I'm asking you guys if you could help figure out where this property line. Do I have my full 10 acres? Do I go back or am I restricted to the two surveys that I have? But I would think this puts everything in question with this meeting until you can figure out what the situation is as far as the setback. Because this new, new thing they want to put in would be 40-foot over the line according to my surveys. I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I have the paperwork here. You need to see it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Harriet Castle, 14 tree top. The planning board failed to prescribe a time limit for when the project should begin, completed, or both. I say that even based on what Mr. Mengele said. It's still written into law, so I don't know why you guys have been ignoring that. The owners failed to give any substantial evidence for the need for the special exception and did not meet the guidelines. The planning board did not seem to have taken into consideration that less than two miles away, a new project called Ocean Breeze Boat and Storage will hold 158 spaces approximately without lighting and lit canopies. One of the special, number one of the special exceptions, they cannot have safe ingress and egress when the construction road to be built, to build the RV boat storage is the same entrance open to the public, making it for dangerous conditions. South Old Dixie Highway is also only 22 feet with no turning lanes into the facility with wide and long trailers. Number two of the exceptions, they will not minimize economic noise, glare, or odor on adjacent properties by devaluing our properties that will include commercial vehicles and equipment and allowing 11 25 foot pole lights, 76 canopy lights. That was added afterwards. They didn't vote on adding vehicles and equipment. So that was a default. The specific conditions Kim Buck had stated also for the lighting were not reduced to writing in the motion either, other than saying it would be dark sky. But she had a lot of other specifics that weren't included. There is not sufficient buffering even with dark sky lighting. The motion approved states only a 45 foot buffer with no mention of a natural buffer would be left. It could be clear cut with the way the motion was written, harming us more after what was already done to us. So technically, they could just clear cut it. The lighting will have a negative economic impact on nearby properties, and there would be glare from the vehicles as well. They failed to show they would have a positive economic effect on adjacent properties. Testimony was given as a negative impact, the current storage building is having, and a future RV boat storage by a realtor. Three tree top is still on the market. That was brought up at the previous meeting. The initial permit obtained from the St. John's Water Management District did not include the RV boat storage. They, they're saying today it does, but I've talked to them numerous times, and they say they needed to apply for a separate one for the RV boat storage. And it's still required when I spoke to them the other day. Our flooding concerns also were not addressed that occur in our backyard since a Cube Smart was built, and the RV boat storage with its higher elevation will be a perfect storm for the flooding to worsen. I ask you please to grant our appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Questions?
I have some questions for Mr. Mengele, very specific to the special exception guidelines in our municipal code, sorry. You'll have to walk me through this, Mr. Mengele. The planning board, when taking into consideration the special exception, okay? One, what did they, did they take into consideration anything specific to minimizing noise, glare, or odor, or economic impact to the nearby properties? Do they specifically address, we can take it, bucket it, do they specifically address steps to minimize noise?
I think that the staff report that I presented mentioned, I don't have it in front of me. So I'd say that we addressed each of the nine criteria within the staff report, and the planning board to the degree that they questioned or had any issues with anything had been satisfied because they did approve the special exception.
Again, so, so how did they, what do you feel in the special, they're addressing that they addressed the economic impact on the nearby properties?
Let me go back to noise, I guess. So you had hours of operation that were set up, and you had setbacks that were also approved. So you had the move from the 25 to 45. As far as economic impacts, I, I think that's the, the number nine, that's probably the hardest one of any of these, and so that it requires that net impact to be positive. It's, it's something I think that we actually had some comment that was made that said that, it may not have been at the, at the, I think it was at the planning board hearing that said that the use was actually needed. There was also an email, I think, from the HOA that reflected that.
So number nine, did the boards take into effect the economic effect on the use, on the proposed use on adjacent nearby properties that it shall be positive? At the time, was the boards aware that there were more RV parks going in nearby?
The board certainly was, because they had approved the one that was mentioned, I think, but I don't know about the name Ocean Breeze, but they, they had approved that, the one on Old Kings.
Okay. And, and how, did they take into consideration whether or not there'd be a negative impact economically, and like it states in number two?
That was not mentioned as part of the board's deliberations.
Can I stick it, you, you mentioned a letter from the HOA. What did they, what did they say?
There was an email where a comment that was said that the, the use of, the RV use could be, could be beneficial, I think was what the, and I'm paraphrasing.
I can't have anybody in the back, can't have any comments.
So finally.
It's in the record.
In granting the special exception, did the board prescribe any kind of time limit for the use of which special exception granted shall begin or be completed or both?
The board did not.
Okay. It says here, if they did not, failure to begin or complete or both, such use within the time limit shall be void of the special exception. In granting it, the board shall, shall prescribe the time limit. So they failed to prescribe the time limit?
The board did not set a time limit.
Okay. So they failed to set the time limit, which we need that in order to approve this as special exception, correct?
The board has not had a time limit with a special exception, I believe, for at least 20 years.
Well, it says here in, in our own code, in granting this, any, any special exception, the board may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards in conformity with these development regulations. Violations of such conditions and safeguards when made a part of the terms under the agreement is recommended shall be deemed a violation of these development regulations. In granting a special exception, the board shall prescribe a time limit within which the uses for which the special exception, if granted, shall be begun or completed or both. Failure to begin or complete or both, such use within the time limit shall void the special exception. Maybe it's a question for Mr. Hadid. When it says the board shall prescribe, must they prescribe?
That, that is what is, that is the meaning of the words, but as Mr. Mengele said, that we have, the, the planning board does not prescribe that time historically.
Just because they don't doesn't not mean that should they follow our ordinance or our requirements, rather, in the code to prescribe? Because shall means, shall. My question is, just because they didn't doesn't mean they shouldn't follow? And should we not maybe remand this back to them? To cover that? Given that we've made it all the way here? Just because maybe they need to learn how.
I guess I could ask you better, and I'm just standing here at the podium.
I hear you.
So I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
What would be the benefit? Let me ask you that. What would be the benefit in going back and having a two-year time limit prescribed for the initiation of a use?
I find the benefit is following our code.
Run with the land.
That's the benefit for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Is following the code, sir.
Okay.
So, you know.
Could I just say, this is a procedural, sorry to interrupt, but everything that, that you're reading from comes under the heading of special exception guidelines.
Right.
Just want to make that one.
So I'm, question for you or Mr. Hadid. So clarifies if a commis, if a commissioner is not in agreement with the planning board, how, they says a sitting as an appellate, since this is new to us, what processes or how do we phrase either objections or things that are, that we don't agree with?
These are your criteria for the process that we're undergoing now.
Right. So if you, if a member doesn't agree with one of the, one of the nine processes, is that not reason?
Yes, yes. I'd say the, the nine processes are not on your table. Planning board weighed those, they made their decision on those nine criteria guidelines. That was their prerogative. Your prerogative is competent, substantial evidence, due process, essential requirements of law.
Mr. Chair, the best way to explain that is if there's some one of the nine things where the planning board's decision reflected that that criterion was met or satisfied. In order for this board to overturn it, it would have to find that there was no evidence submitted to support that conclusion. There was an absence of evidence. If they totally, if they totally neglected something. It's not that you might disagree, you know, for instance, I'll just pick one out, lighting. Okay, so they definitely entertained evidence on lighting. Definitely action was taken with respect to the lighting. If a commissioner were to believe, well, they didn't go far enough, they should have denied the special exception, or they should have done more, you cannot base your decision on that because there was in fact substantial competent evidence. It was addressed, there was an engineer that provided a report, a lighting plan was submitted. So there was in fact evidence submitted on that point, even though a commissioner might, if you were considering it the first time, come to a different conclusion. That's the difference between sitting in an appellate role and sitting, say, in the seat of the planning board, deciding it for yourselves the first time. Makes it very tough.
Well, well, let's go back to, based on evidence. There's, what was determined or what was the evidence to support buffering? And it's not just the depth of the, of the setback. So we have a 45 foot, was it 45 foot? So what was the evidence that there was sufficient buffering in that 45 foot area?
No, we can't consider that. We can only consider the 25 foot.
Unless there's no evidence.
Well, the 45.
Now, the 45 is, is.
They added that after this thing was made, so we can't consider the 45 foot.
Yeah, the 45 foot was the approval. And so what I'd say is, is this was submitted for the record, point number one. And then the discussion then was the proximity of the parked RVs and boats without the canopy proximate to the rear line. So you had the 25 foot landscape buffer, the board through their deliberations came back and said, make it 45. And so I think that's where they, they received this, they asked for more.
But I don't find, as, as a point was made, I don't find that there is sufficient detail to, to provide what's happening in that remaining area. So regardless of if they put it at 45 feet, all you have then is you're trying to superimpose the landscape as a buffer that's shown here into the 45 foot?
No, thank you. Also had statement by the applicant on the record saying that they were going to leave natural area. And I think that you heard it here, that it was going to be, you have to have 15 feet to step down from the, from the elevated grade. And so that, that was the math that was done. And so then you'd have natural area that'd be left between the extent of the, of the parking area, or in this case, access area. Remember, this is what we're looking at now. Let me get back to, oh, let's see, where's that? Plan that was submitted that was shifted back, rearward. And so the intent there was to leave natural area where possible. So we're not, not planting in that landscape buffer, you leave that natural area, then, then that is what it is.
So on the record, we have to have that on the record? That's, has that been?
Planning board had it on their record, and it was met.
So before, we had a planted buffer. So you're saying just the existing natural is all that is required?
The planted was still said, but then the remainder was going to be left natural. So that's what I recall, that the planted was the landscape plan, and then the 45 foot was added. And so that's what they were trying to show then here. The planning board ultimately said, set it back to 45. And then what I understood was said was then that area, then the difference, the delta was going to be left in a natural state.
Does anybody have access to the minutes?
We're working at a bit of a disadvantage here. We don't have a verbatim transcript in front of you. One was not supplied, but we are working from memory as best we can.
I guess I'm just struggling with the, the lack of, for me, the lack of evidence that there was sufficient discussion on the buffer.
I feel like we need the minutes. Maybe we need to move to continue here.
You have the minutes in your packet. They were attached by the appellate.
Actually, listen to the, the recording if you like. And the, the burden is on the appellants to make a record. They did not get a transcription. So it's not on us, the advocates. We presented our case. It's all in the recording, because that's what we've relied on. We didn't get it transcribed, but you could if you wanted to. But I, I think it's unfair for us to have it be delayed as a result of, you know, it's, was completely aired out for three and a half hours. A lot was said about the buffer. A lot was said about all of the factors that you've pointed at, weighed and decided on.
All right, so we've heard from a couple of us. Anybody else with any comments?
I just, I'm almost afraid to make this comment, but the one thing I heard that, that kind of bothered me, and maybe there's a very easy explanation, or it may not be something that I can even challenge at this point based on what I've heard from our lawyer. And that is, the gentleman had got up and talked about the survey, saying there was a question as to the, the western boundary between this project and his land. Was that point addressed previously? And is, I mean, that would be a problem if the survey line is wrong.
As I remember, Mr. DiMartino had made comment on the record about easements, drainage easements. He had spoken with me last Friday. I don't believe the boundary dispute was raised at the, at the public hearing in July with the planning board. And it, it is what it is. You know, I think he stated that three separate surveyors can't, can't agree, and so.
I've seen people have to take a house down that was built.
Understood.
Because there was a foot and a half mistake.
Yeah, it's not relevant.
Why is it not relevant?
It's new evidence. It's not...
Well, that was my point, yeah.
It's not part of our previous record.
We can't consider this at that point.
And I relate, it is what it is. There's a certain... There's a known distance between the rear of those lots and the established property here where they'll... They have to work within, whatever that distance is. And it's plus 85 feet, minus 85 feet. It is what it is.
I guess one more question. As pertains to number nine, "The economic effect of the proposed use on adjacent and nearby properties shall be positive." I don't think the... Right, so the evidence that was mentioned that it was needed is not actually evidence that it's positive on the adjacent or nearby properties. I don't know that there was evidence that showed it would be positive to the adjacent properties. So I don't know if you can clarify that.
I don't think there was evidence to the contrary presented by the public, I suppose. It would be my best answer there. Is that there was staff's report. There was... There was statements made by the public, certainly that this wasn't needed. But I don't think anyone came back and said that they were negatively impacted.
Well, it says positive. It doesn't say negatively.
Understood.
Yes, sir.
If there was no discussion of it, you can't impute that it's negative.
That's where I'm heading.
It's...
Well, you also can't compute that we have evidence to the... That it was a dream.
To address your prior statement, how can you... Some of the things you said were very subjective. So how can you understand or get in the mind of the planning Board members of what they were considering when they were hearing all the evidence? You know, just because they didn't discuss it or, you know, make a direct comment about it, doesn't mean they didn't contemplate it.
I think I was just going off of Mr. Hadid's comment about we would have to show there was no evidence or something to the effect of what you said. So in the proceedings through the planning Board, if there was no evidence presented or if the staff didn't have evidence to present that there was a positive proposed use on adjacent and nearby properties... Because I wouldn't... If there was that proof, I would like to know what that was.
I think we have to...
From the proceedings.
We have to assume, and that's maybe a big assumption, that the planning Board made that determination in granting the special exception and the nine criteria were met. And so that's their prerogative.
Or there's an opportunity just to send it back to have them explain that, correct? When you talk about remanding it back.
If you feel that that...
For that, for number nine.
There was not sufficient evidence based on the record that you have? I suppose that's correct.
And then my final... Yeah, and then my final question is for Mr. Hadid. In discussing, let's say we're able to get past one through nine, for whatever reason, with the code where it talks about the time limit, because the Board did not prescribe a time limit, does that... Is that something that we're supposed to take into consideration here?
I think you can because I part company with Mr. Merrill on his interpretation of that section. That section is titled at the top, "Guidelines." And then it lists a number of factors to be taken into account. Then it has a separate paragraph, which is very instructional as far as what the planning Board is supposed to do. And it says that they shall put a timeline on. They did not. It really is up to you to how you weigh that. Mr. Mangle has... Mr. Mangle has said to you that, well, of what advantage is that if they go back and set that timeline? What does that do to this case? So you have to weigh that. It is in your judgment.
Well, we have... You know, as to move things along, we have, you know, an option, three options, correct? If you approve, then you're basically don't agree with the planning Board.
Correct.
If you deny, then you agree with the planning Board.
Correct.
And if you send it back, that would be a... Is that one of your options?
Remand.
Sending it back, but it sounds like you didn't agree with the planning Board, but that's all right.
It says to rem... Well, it says to... One of our options is to remand it back to the planning Board to take into consideration.
Correct.
Whatever we bring up.
But what would we ask them to reconsider?
We could ask, one, to prescribe a time and two, to give us exact... Exact proof that they met the condition of number nine, that the economic effect of the proposed use on adjacent nearby properties is positive and shall be positive. So one is to provide that and two is to follow our procedure and to deem a time. Time limit, as the residents that have appealed this have asked.
Since when is it the planning Board's responsibilities to make a presentation to prove that the uses are positive?
Since it was...
It's the applicant's responsibility.
It'd be up to the staff.
Staff is putting the...
It's not the planning Board's responsibility.
And I guess from just a procedural standpoint and moving forward, since we're talking about the time, is this a... Procedurally, are we approaching special exceptions moving forward differently? Is there a... Is this time feature to where if these don't proceed, they expire? Mr. Mangle made a point that it was... That it runs with the land, but is it run with the land for only a certain period of time if they don't act on it?
No. The county has, by its practices, not required time limits. The reason why time limits typically are included in plans is to prevent speculative acquisition of development rights. Well, I'm sorry, and one other reason is actually perhaps more important. If a person holds on to their acquired rights, then they develop an immunity to code changes, changes that are made to modernize land development.
This is a... Almost wish we'd had a little bit more of a prep for this appellate proceeding. And I'm to the point where I don't know that there's anything that we can do based on what you've presented. Which puts me in a strange position because... Huh?
What's this all about?
I really, at this point, don't know that we have anything to act on based on what's been presented. I don't know what the value of this proceeding is. But...
We could remand it back to get the... At least get the... Grant the time. And because that's because the people that have appealed have asked for that as well. And it does follow our code.
I'm going to look at...
To prescribe the time limit.
I look at that as being setting precedent. Are we going to be asking this moving forward? Unless this is something that is changed in a review of the Land Development Code. But beyond Flagler County, is this typical language? Is there...
So if we don't remand it, there is an appeals process, correct, for either for the residents or the owner of the property through the circuit court, correct?
That's correct. But the nature of the review at that point is even more restricted than the review that you have presently.
And if we did not follow the code to prescribe a time limit, when we have this opportunity to do so, to remand it back, would that be grounds for it in that more restricted space?
A party could bring that to the attention of the circuit court and argue that that requirement was not met and therefore the job was not fulfilled.
Is there opportunities? I don't think we are in any position here to bring the parties back together if there are areas of disagreement that's been settled through the planning Board process.
The only way I can conceive that to happen is if a majority of the Board wanted to have a further review of the record to see what evidence was presented. The Board could defer this to the next meeting. But they would have to quickly because now we're dealing with people's rights on both sides.
Again, this is... There's been a lot of delays because there's a lot of, having not been through this, of trying to figure out the right course or to make sure that everybody's been heard or...
I'd like to make a motion.
Again, if there's... Somebody wants to throw something out there for...
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to remand this project number 2024-08-0024 to the planning Board to prescribe a time limit for the use of the special exception.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Pennington, seconded by Commissioner Sullivan. Any additional questions?
Well, that's going to make it now everything that comes before you, Adam. We're going to make sure they put a time limit on it for any special exception. Just...
You fixed your code.
We're just setting a little precedent here.
Do I open this back up, Mr. Hadid, for public comment?
Probably an abundance of caution with the statute, yes.
Okay, so at this time, I'll open up for public comment addressing the motion.
Jeff Locor, 16, Hummingbird Circle. Council... Commissioner Hanson asked about that email where the HOA said it was a good thing. I'd say if you don't have the email, you have no evidence that says it's a good thing and it is needed in the area. I think that's... Oh, and also, there is testimony at the planning Board meeting where there was a realtor who specifically stated the negative impact on the community. She said... She was talking about the house that was listed. Believe she mentioned what they were trying to get for the house and it was negatively impacted because of the storage building. And the house is on the market for an extended period of time out of the norm under this current economic environment. So that was there and he neglected to tell you that. I've found that all these meetings that I've been at, he's very selective on what he wants people to know, the Boards in particular, personal... Personal... Sorry.
Not appropriate. Okay.
Can I ask a point of order? Mr. Chairman, we're talking... The discussion is about your motion, is that correct? Okay.
We are.
I thought we went...
Well, well received. Has to be about the motion.
Alan Sanford, 14, Tree Top Circle. This is about the motion. I know that initially, when you talked about the motion to remand, you also mentioned some evidence. And I feel that all of the neighbors that I've been dealing with this for the last year or so have combed over this thing inside out. And I would like to see that evidence. I would like you to add to that motion, as you first said, that you'd like to see some evidence for some of these things on there that they say that they have... It's in here that says that you can, as a continue, continue the appeal request to a certain time and date certain. The continuance should be for the appellants or for the staff to provide additional information to the Board. And remand is, you know, special exception to approval of planning Board. It kicks it back to them. But, you know, when we're saying that these nine criteria have evidence to say that they've all been met, I strongly object to that. And I'm sure anybody who's really combed over this, as long as we have, could... Would greatly like to hear what that evidence is. So please consider asking for evidence if you remand. Thank you.
Harriet Castle, 14, Tree Top. I would also ask that if you do remand it back, that you do include number nine. I mean, they didn't provide evidence for that. It's very important. A realtor did get up and express that they had had problems selling a property that's still actually still for sale, you know, based on the trees being cleared and such. Also, I am concerned about the motion where it just said there's a 45-foot buffer. And Mr. Mangle says, well, it was discussed. And Kim Buck discussed it. Yes, it was discussed a lot. But as we've learned the hard way, if they don't reduce it in writing in the motion, even Mr. Mangle has said, well, not much you can do. The attorneys can stand up here and promise the moon. But if it's not put in writing, which it was not put in writing, they could technically clear cut it. And then, you know, all this talk of buffering, all the injurious things that have happened to us could all happen again. And the planning Board did not make sure that was put in there. I think the planning Board depends on the... On Mr. Mangle and staff to actually write it up afterwards. And why it was not more detailed, I don't understand. So I would appreciate it if you had more things about the special exceptions and the motion that failed to protect us. Thank you.
Just a point of order on that. In the findings, the conditions of the planning Board, it is expressly stated that the buffer is to be increased. And then one other comment about evidence and the production or the non-production of evidence. And I'm going to take the example of one of the public speakers. Now, I wasn't there at the hearing. I don't know what was said. I don't know what was deuced. The minutes don't really tell you enough. The positive value. If someone else at that hearing testified or presented evidence that there was positive value, you had evidence that there was negative value, you are not permitted to reweigh that. You, at this stage, the planning Board heard that evidence and they decided to go route A and not route B. You can't say, well, let's say you somehow had the transcript. You had everything in front of you and it showed that somebody said it's positive and somebody said that it's negative. You can't reweigh that thinking, well, if I had to decide that, I would have chosen the opposite. So the question is whether there was any evidence that was admissible. That's what is meant by the term substantial competent evidence, admissible evidence. If admissible evidence was made on behalf of the zoning applicant, the applicant for the special exception on all of the points and the planning Board sided with them on all the points, that means that the case has been fulfilled, that you cannot overturn it on the basis of those findings. It's where there wasn't competent evidence submitted on a particular issue. Did that occur? I would have no way of knowing.
My concern is if we were to pass this motion, it'll go back to Planning Board, and they'll put a date on it, and it's right back in our laps again. Nothing's changed, other than we have a date. So that, that concerns me, that we haven't learned anything.
But what has changed is that we did, our Planning Board followed the shall in our guideline, and that if the residents want to, you know, further go to the courts with this, that we've at least addressed that portion of our code.
Well, that's true. But that's what's going to happen. They're going to put a date on it. We're going to be sitting right here again. Just, the only thing that's changed is we have the date. And I agree with you, Leanne, that that eliminates the possibility of going, going to court, losing over that little piece, so.
I didn't close public comments, so it's still open.
Hello, Jacqueline Di Martino, 2000 South Old Dixie Highway. And according to the motion, I would also like to see you add in about number nine because I know Mr. Mangle is a very busy guy. He has a lot of meetings, and he does more than we do with this one little thing. But what the email that he's referring to was people that said they have storage at their own places, and they don't need this storage facility. So he kind of got that turned around, which makes it look different to you guys, and I know it has to be. But if the amendment could be added with the proofs, because there really was negative impact to the people that live behind the proposed, and only, I'm only talking about the proposed thing. I don't care about the one that's already built. I know that doesn't count. But they already have reason to show negative impact. And it was a three to two vote with the Planning Board, which means a couple of those guys had their own questions about it. And maybe they didn't all see eye to eye or had different reasons and stuff, so maybe sending it back to them with both of those things in the motion would help clarify everything for everybody. Thank you.
All right, anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back. All right, restate your motion, please.
Yeah. So my motion was to remand the project number 2024-08-0024 to the Planning Board so that the board will prescribe a time limit for use for the special exception.
All right, so we have a motion, and do you still second? All right, so any other final comments on this?
I will address why I'm not amending it, if you'd like me to. I'll tell you why I'm not amending it, because when I, Mr. Hadid was talking about the items presented, the realtor with the negative, the, the, the email, which I understand, but I think there was a time where the applicant talked about C2, and the use could be a higher use. And obviously, the board knew that at a C2, you could be looking at a hospital, bowling alley, and all of that, but they felt like this was the least impact on that C2 property. I think, as I recall, that meeting had that discussion in it. And when I hear Mr. O'Brien talk about, we don't know what was in the mindset of the board, but they obviously heard that argument, I think it would still come back to that. And I, I don't think, I think that they, that's what they took into consideration with the economic effect on that property being positive, because it's the lesser of the C2, you know, application onto the property. That's what I'm thinking is going to happen, no matter what. And so I do believe that it's limited in everything else, and that they've talked about lighting and buffers. I just, you know, and I think that they thought this was the lesser impact. I can't speak for them, but I do believe you deserve a time limit.
Okay, that's actually a good point, because we're not, there's plenty of rights, property rights, that are, that are tied to this, that could be worse than, than this use that was, that was stated. Okay, motion, if, going to go ahead and call the question. So motion by Ms. Pennington, seconded by Commissioner Sullivan. All those in favor signify, right? This is, just to make sure, we are, this isn't approval or denial, this is.
Remanding it back.
Remanding back.
To add a time limit.
Okay. All those in favor signify with aye.
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 All, any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that's four to one. Thank you, everybody. We will move on to the next item. The 90 is legislative. This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending the Land Development Code related to tree regulations. I said that, second reading, yes. Mr. Mangle.
Don't know if I'm up to even talking about this right now. So here it is. It's basically the same as we had done last time. I think Chair Dance and I have agreed on the points that we had discussed previously. You've got options here to approve, deny, or continue. Thank you.
Does anybody want to ask questions or make a motion?
Andy, did you consider, the, the one thing that bothered me about tree ordinances and stuff is the, is where they, where they, they clear cut a lot, because they say, if we save that oak tree, we would have to build a wall around it, because we're going to have to raise the level of the lot by three feet. So that's why we had to take that tree out. Did, did that get addressed in this tree ordinance? And, or should it get addressed?
I don't know that, that I understand. I mean, there's plenty of options for people to, if they have to raise the lot. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, well, you know, the, the one that just frosts me is the, is the Jungle Hut Road one, where they cut everything. And that was their rationale, that if they had to save those oak trees, they were going to have to build a well, basically.
Right.
Around them with block, cinder block, or some kind of attractive stone, and that that wasn't good for the tree, and the tree would eventually die anyway. So, which is, you know, that really pissed me off.
And sometimes you just don't have room. I mean, instances like that, you try to be selective. You try to take the best one that's in the best health, and, and maybe you, you pick and choose. But the, the problem we have now is with, with Phil, to, because of the, the problems we've seen with, with stormwater and everything, so this.
But you, but you, as a landscape guy, you think that's appropriate to build a wall around the tree to save the tree?
It works. Some time to time, yes, it works. The hospital decided that that.
I saw that. The hospital does it, yeah.
And those, it's not a great example, because they, they waited too long to get some, some help for the tree, but it seems to be doing okay. You know, time will tell if it.
Yeah. I did see that, though. That was.
Yeah. So that's a perfect example of money spent on some retaining walls to be able to save some larger canopy trees.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I had just one.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I think we, near the end of the discussion, we also talked about the fact that, okay, we, we have limits on the diameter of the trees, and which can be taken out, which can't. But what happens when you build, you plant some trees, and then 20 years later, that becomes a classic tree, when in reality, you know, we have curbing and sidewalks and all that? Is there any, is that just done on, just be reasonable? Is it one where it would just be a reasonable decision made on something like that?
In instances of tree health, I think that would be one of those things that comes back to the Planning Director. And again, this is, we've got some of those issues, we can take time to flush out moving forward, because we're going to have the Land Development Code coming back to us in a year.
But it wasn't, we did raise that.
Yeah, because it's, it's, it's been done in Palm Coast without penalty to the property owner, so that the trees can grow healthy, then they removed every other one that hadn't been planted.
Things like that. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the ordinance amending the Land Development Code.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Open up for public comment. Anybody from the public who wants to speak on this? Good evening.
Good evening.
Pull that down for it. There you go.
Now, the Emmys, they had a microphone that went up and down automatically. Okay. My name is Bren Newton. I live in Flagler County, and I'm here representing the Lucia Flagler Sierra Club, who sent me mainly to thank you for taking this step. We appreciate it. It was, it's similar to what we asked a few years ago on a particular development to accommodate the trees, take them into consideration. But of course, there's a couple of minor things, and I do apologize if you've already addressed them. On the visuals, the sketch plat review, and you've already got like the size of the paper that it has to be printed on and that sort of thing. Could you also say that, include aerials that are to scale and could overlay what the sketches talk about? So, you know, general public, somebody like me, could look at them and see, that's where the trees are, and that's what we're talking about. We appreciate the fact that you have penalties, and, and it seems pretty clear that the $500 fine is per tree, not just roughshod. But ought there not be a bond as well? Anticipatory, somebody thinking, well, I'm just, because I don't know how much $500 is compared to getting rid of a tree. It's just the cost of doing business in some, in some instances. The preamble to all this said that you wanted to incentivize preserving trees. Is, is there a place to put an incentive so that if a developer sets aside a stand of trees, which we know is more valuable than a specimen tree in a yard, then the number of units they can put in on the developable part is the same, even though it's going to be on smaller lots or less setbacks? Because everybody would benefit. I think any arborist would tell you, a stand of trees is much more valuable than a specimen tree that's going to fall on the house. So appreciate the effort. A lot of horses have already left the barn, but this, this will help in the future. And you need to hurry before the legislature tells you you can't. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I think most of those are things that we can address later on, and actually, the sketch plat has that requirement for the tree survey, so we're good on that one. Anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any other final comments, questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. All right, that does it for our action items. We'll come back to the Administrator and County report.
Thank you. I'll try to be really brief, just a couple items. Just wanted to give a shout out to our tourism office recently. If you hadn't heard, they had earned high praise from a tourism event marketing efforts. They won a first place Henry Award at the Visit Florida 2024 Florida Awards. The award was announced the last week in August at the Florida Governor's Conference on Tourism. The tourism office won the place based on a tourism special event marketing category for its effort on promoting the 2023 Hang Eight Dolf Surfing Competition in Flagler Beach. I know we have a great team, but I just wanted to recognize our Marketing Director, Courtney Brokoff, for her marketing efforts in achieving that award. Moving on, this morning, we had participated in another community outreach event regarding the beach management plan and funding. Today's meeting was with the Ocean Hammock HOA. Had a great turnout despite the weather. Information was well received. I've gotten a couple follow-up emails from some of the people in attendance. We do have a few more outreach events tentatively planned in September. We've got one on the 26th and the 30th at 5:30 at the Hammock Community Center. And then we also reserve the date of Thursday, October 3rd, at 5:30 at the Hammock Community Center. Still waiting to confirm the final meeting with the Hammock Dunes folks for their large public meeting that they hold. So just waiting on that. So just moving along with beach management. I did want to discuss, as you recall, the Phoenix Crossings Project. That was a project that came before you. It came through HHS for the use of ship funding, as well as ARPA funds. The project is in the city limit of Benel. It is exempt from school impact fees due to the affordable housing component, but it is not exempt from the prop share under the School Planning ILA. This is going to be an issue involving City of Benel, because that's where the project is located, as well as the school board. Although it is subject to approval for their elected officials, the staff of both the city and the school district are proposing to exempt the project from that prop share payment, despite the literal interpretation of the ILA. I think when we're looking at it, our stance is probably threefold. It's in Benel's jurisdiction. It involves the school district revenue. If they're okay with it, if those elected bodies are okay with it, then why would we object? Second, the staff, at staff level with the working group, they were going to propose to the oversight, the school board oversight committee, that the interlocal agreement be amended to allow local governments and school board to exempt affordable housing projects from the prop share requirements on a case-by-case basis. And then from a policy perspective, affordable housing wasn't at the forefront of our thinking when we redrafted that ILA several years ago. So it's kind of taken on a new role of importance since COVID and the crisis of housing supply. Our staff needs to send some sort of correspondence back to the school board. And so I'm really just looking for consensus, if you're okay with this kind of hands-off approach on the prop share, and that we look to amend the ILA probably next year. So just looking for consensus, if you're okay with us kind of taking that approach.
Bring it to the committee, right? Or is this our own?
We would be sending a letter to, back to the school board, basically saying, you know, that we kind of support what they're saying.
I agree.
I agree. Okay.
And that's it. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hadid.
I, I just have one item today. We received the court's order in the Carver Jim dispute, where the interlocal agreement was challenged based on the incorporation, the sheriff's potential use of the Powell Organization. The court dismissed the case, finding that Mr. Josie didn't have standing, but also addressed the merits, which the court didn't have to do, and stated that the interlocal agreement that was prepared was valid, that the, all the governments had broad home rule, the county's home rule, the City of Benel's home rule, the authority of the school board is broad enough, and likewise, the sheriff's authority is broad enough for them to have entered into this interlocal agreement. So that case was dismissed. Well, yeah, we received the order today. The judge probably signed it Friday.
Very good. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Great, thank you, sir. All right, at this time, we'll open it up for public comment, our second community outreach. Maybe I'd like to.
Kim Carney, Flagler Beach. Can I try it again? You going to answer me, or do we wait till tomorrow? Or what do we do? We are going to answer my questions.
Repeat your questions.
Okay. Number one, have the reports from the City of Flagler Beach that are required for annexation been received by the county? Number two, is the city timely in their action to pass resolution, I'm sorry, not ordinances reflecting the annexation? Voluntary, I would think the answer is yes. I just want to know. And is there any report from admin or the attorney regarding the outcome of the meeting with the PAR Board? And could the county attorney describe urbanization as it relates to Florida Statute 171.044?
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Mr. Hadid, can, or Adam, were you at the, did you go to the PAR? It was you and Sean. So would you like? So would you like to speak to the meeting?
Yes, sir. myself and Sean Moylan did attend the PAR Board with the City of Flagler Beach. Based on the statements of the city planner, I think it's probably safe, and I'm not speaking out of turn, that there were some items that were not completely vetted out, particularly the condition of the availability of sanitary sewer treatment. And so that was a bit of a surprise to, I think, the group and also to the developer. So regarding the, the reports that are necessary prior to the annexation, I think that it was lacking in, at least in its, in its treatment of the, of the sanitary sewer issue. Mr. Moylan did provide a report following the PAR Board hearing to administration, I believe. We also had a follow-up meeting with the applicant, applicant's attorney to work through our issues. The, I think we've come to consensus on most of those, and we do intend to be present tomorrow night at the Flagler Beach Special Meeting to make our presentation then on, on the outstanding items. Let's see, what have I left out?
Timely response?
I think, I think that's safe to say that that's been done. I didn't look to, to make sure that the public notice was done like it was intended. I do need to state for the record that we only obtained the bulk of the information from a public records request made with the City of Flagler Beach, and so that, what it's, what it's worth, that's how we got notice.
And urbanization.
Yeah, that, I think, in statute, I think it refers to it as, and maybe I'm gonna paraphrase wrongly and give some atomisms here, but it'll be the, the pendency of a provision of water and sewer. And so I think that that's one of those things, the, the infrastructure that's necessary to, the urban-type infrastructure that's coming in. If you recall, in our world, and we had made a, I made a statement about this at our last planning board meeting, that we had designated the area east of US1 as a planned urban service area. So what we intended in that area, particularly to us, was that was an area where annexations would happen, where utilities would be provided within the timeframes within our comprehensive plan. So I would, I would provide that definition, that urbanization is where you anticipate the, the urban services, particularly water and sewer, but probably even broader for a city where they provide fire, police protection, that whole bundle of, of services that a city provides that would be particular to an annexation. I think that's what you anticipate would be reflected in an, an urbanization determination prior to an annexation.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, when we'll, and public comments, and we'll bring it back to the board for board member comments. Commissioner Hanson.
I have nothing.
I have something.
Commissioner Pennington.
Of course, I have something. I'm gonna piggyback on the annexation for just a minute, and one is, now we know about the reporting, but two, Mr. Hadid, there has been some residents asking about two questions. One is, what is the, where are we with, who would be on the road, John Anderson? Will they be taking John Anderson with them? Is the question. Should we continue to have John Anderson? And then the second question that residents have brought up to me is the enclave. There is some discussion going on whether or not there is an actual enclave created down in this that would go against state statute, because the state statute, I believe, says that you cannot create an enclave in annexation. So can you address maybe for them the discussion about an enclave? And the road?
Take the enclave first. Yes, this annex, this proposed annexation does create an enclave, and that is not permitted by state law, but it is up to the county to assert that claim. I don't know if residents of Flagler Beach would have standing. I don't specialize in the standing, the legal standing of citizens to challenge annexations, but I know that the county could challenge this annexation because it creates an enclave. Now, the governments can enter into an inter-local agreement that would permit the enclave, so that is one way that, that hypothetically could be addressed. So that's it on enclaves. On the road, one of our specific requests, which I think was described to you in advance of the hearing that we attended, was to insist that Flagler Beach take ownership of the portion of John Anderson that would be within the city for a number of reasons. One, they could apply impact fees for, you know, improvements to that road. We would not be able to because it's, you know, not a part of our road system anymore. Also, they could define the aesthetics for the road. They could define the speed limit. They could do those things that municipalities typically do. I, are, the information I got back was that there wasn't a lot of warmth in taking over that segment of John Anderson, but I'm not current on that. I suppose we'll address that tomorrow night.
Is that something we should be addressing as a county commission, or is that something? I mean, we've, we've talked about that holistically, right? We're annexing out so much land, we're still responsible for the road. And then we have this opportunity here, I don't know if it's, it's something between knowing that there's an enclave and there's possibility of doing an inter-local to compelling them to take the portion of the road so that we don't have to maintain that portion of the road anymore, if that is something we should consider. That's my two, my two cents. I'm tired.
And I would say there's been extensive conversations, especially within Benel, city limits of Benel, and, and what's occurring at the preserve. So those are very current discussions that need to happen. I don't know where we go from here with that, but whether it's interlocals with the other agencies, but.
I don't know if we need to.
They, they actually present different problem, different scales of the problem. The order of magnitude is far different. For the Flagler Beach situation, it is, it is a minor collector. It is a significant road. We're not talking about neighborhood streets or anything like that. So it really should be something that they're overseeing because it's within their municipal jurisdiction, to have all the controls relative to the, to the road, which we would not have those similar controls. In the Benel situation, the, there are basically many roads that are not paved. They're very high-expense roads, and the roads are used by the city to deliver some of the services to their residents, but meanwhile, we, we are hampered because those roads don't serve county purposes other than provide transportation for the local residents. So, so it is a, a definitely an order of magnitude different.
Yeah.
But still serious.
I'm just, you know, my two cents on it is that I think they should take the road. You know? I mean, they've been on social media talking about the revenues coming with it as part of the reasons they want to do the annexation. Then I think the responsibility also, you know, I, I don't want to own any more roads where we don't own the land around it.
All right. Commissioner Sullivan.
Just two quick items. One, we need a little agreement on the election canvassing board. I'm on it, and Donnie's on it right now, but we have a big election coming up, and there's always a possibility if one of us can't make it or something like that. I'd just like to designate, now that we know that you've been elected, Mr. Chairman, that we have one more person designated from us to, to be backup for the canvassing board so we don't have to go through a decision on that in the future. So I just, we could just quickly discuss that and maybe come up with a recommendation.
I volunteer to be the backup.
And I can, I can assign Commissioner Hanson that as chair, right? I can say, okay.
Yes, sir. You can do that, sir.
Okay, and then I'll be your backup. Do we both need to do it, or in case we have?
We're a little uncertain there, having been on the board and talking to Katie. The problem is, in this next national election, the number of mail-in ballots is gonna be much more than any of the elections before, just the way things are going, based on what we just saw. So I think it's good to have both names on there, depending on.
I always volunteer, I volunteered to be the backup.
Yeah.
For you.
You just took it.
Yeah, I said the backup.
Make up your mind. Just, just.
You want it, or you want to be backup?
Just something on the record that says.
I said I'd like to be the backup, but I will be there every meeting.
Okay. All right, so we both probably need to go through the training. We have some training to do.
Well, I've been through it all. I've been through all the training, including handwriting.
I don't plan to miss any meetings, so.
Okay.
We never know, but, so you're talking, have three of us there then?
All right, so it's, you don't, you don't need a backup.
I mean, Katie could probably use the help with the counting.
The new commissioners are sworn in before the election.
You're backing up Dave, right? Or you, you're backing out?
No, I'm not backing out.
Okay, so you're, you want to be Dave's backup?
Commissioner O'Brien, let Commissioner O'Brien talk, because he's on the right track here.
I, I just wanted to have.
Go ahead. I'm the alternate.
Yeah.
I'll continue to be the alternate.
Right. I didn't mean your spot, but.
No.
They can, they can still serve.
Right.
My apologies, I didn't get that right.
Other ones have been sworn in?
Okay.
It's just, yeah.
So are you the person or me?
Well, it's those two guys.
Right, but we need a third. Katie wants a third.
Okay, I'll be the third.
Okay. Anything else for you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Just one, just quickly, since the Flagler County Cultural Council is something that this board has had to support and push, the annual meeting is at the Southern Recreation Center on the 20th of September, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., no cost. It'll be entertainment and food, and I just encourage the board members to come, if possible, for a good showing. And also, if you haven't been to the Southern Recreation Center, it's a nice place.
A nice place.
Yeah, give you an idea of what's available there. The, the little group there will supply the food and so, and give you a status on where we are on FC3. That's it.
Very good. Commissioner O'Brien.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So the only thing I've got is, is a request to support financially our fire rescue department as they compete against the sheriff one more time on the chili cook-off. So, just to the new people as well, get in the good graces of your fire chief. But, you know, if we could all pitch in at least 50 bucks or more, it would be helpful for the material, the amount of material they have to buy to be able to put it all together. And.
Personal commitment, you mean?
Part, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep.
All right. The only other.
I'm sorry.
Thing I've got is, thank you for everybody's patience. That was probably the most painful proceeding I've, I've been through.
I feel terrible.
And, and I, for everybody that sat through that. But I guess it's better to get one under your belt. I don't know, how many, how many have you had? Is this the first? Okay. Okay. That was, that was an interesting process, so thank you all for your patience, Adam, Mr. Hadid, appreciate your guidance and direction, as always. I really don't think I have anything else, so.
Move, we adjourn.
We adjourn. Thank you. Oh, now I gotta.